Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, April 7th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. I would like to make note that we have all members of the council present this evening, including our city administrator, John Behanko. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item four this evening, and there is nothing under general. Item five is committee correspondence to council. Are there any council members wishing to speak? Counselor Hewitt?
I just want to announce that on Wednesday, April 9th, the Dyer Library will have celebrity scoopers at the Saco Scoop, including our honorable Mayor Jody McPhail.
Great, thank you. And this is a fundraiser with proceeds going back to the Dyer Library, so hoping everybody, I know it might be a little chilly, not quite summer-ready, but still every night's a good night for ice cream. Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I have two committees to report on this evening. First of all, the Bedford-Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit Committee. After a national search effort was completed earlier this year, a subcommittee of the B-Soup Transit Board, including myself, Old Orchard Beach Town Councilor Kenny Blow, and Bedford City Councilor Doris Ortiz unanimously supported the hiring of John Savage to fill the vacant role of B-Soup Executive Director. John comes to us from nearby New Hampshire, bringing over 20 years of progressive experience in the public transportation field. Most recently, he served as General Manager for TransDev, who's the managing entity for the Nashshore Transit System in New Hampshire. We're all looking forward to John applying his acquired transportation management skills and innovative ideas to help sustain the viability of B-Soup Transit in an ever-changing public transit environment. His employment starts on May 5th. I'd also like to note on behalf of B-Soup Transit that during the search and hiring period, the B-Soup Transit continued to operate under the direction of longtime employee and interim Executive Director Rod Carpenter, with the support of all B-Soup staff. Everybody stepped up. I would like to publicly commend all of them for their efforts in keeping the public transportation system running smoothly during this transition period. The second committee I want to report on this evening is the Saco Citizen Grievance Review Committee. The ad hoc committee comprised of myself, Councilor Johnston, and Councilor Gunn continue to work through the submitted grievance issues. Here's a brief update. The discussion concerning the original grievance issues has been concluded. One of the five call-to-action items has been dismissed as being irrelevant due to a change in circumstances since the grievance complaint was initially filed. Another of the five call-to-action items, specifically contract zone agreements and its status, is currently being addressed through staff review, contract party discussions, and public input, and will eventually be reviewed by the council. A third of the five call-to-action items, specifically the Lucia Kimball Deering Trust, will be the topic upon which the committee will begin discussions at the next committee meeting, which is scheduled for this coming Wednesday at 5:00 PM in the first-floor conference room here at City Hall. An agenda is available on the city's website. As a reminder, a comprehensive final report will be submitted by the committee to the city council with action plan recommendations at the conclusion of the committee's work. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Item number six this evening is public comment. If there is anybody wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven this evening is the approval of the minutes, and we do have two sets. First one is for March 17th, 2025, and the second is March 24th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, now it takes us to item eight, and that is action items, and there is one item this evening. Item A is a public hearing for the special entertainment permit for the Golden Rooster, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. The Golden Rooster Restaurant, 236 Main Street, has applied for a renewal of the establishment's special entertainment permit. Permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93 Entertainment, Section 93-2. Clerk has also checked with code enforcement, finance, fire, police departments, and there were no concerns. Moved to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing at 6:30. Six passes 7-0. If there is any member of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Counselor Johnston?
Moved to close the public hearing. Be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by the Golden Rooster Restaurant for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. Moved to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on the item? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I'm totally all set with the special entertainment approval, but in a related item that I think is a good opportunity to discuss, most of us will remember, it was June of last year when we updated the sidewalk, I think it's vending ordinance, as I recall it. I had submitted the amendment that required, under Section 153, I think it is, J, that anyone serving alcohol on essentially the sidewalk or city property was required to get an extension of premise, which is a state permit, in order to serve on a city sidewalk. I don't know if that occurred last year. It was new, we kind of did it midway, but I do bring that up because I think it's important. I've had, you know, without going into details, I've had several individuals speak to that matter to me in the past. So, I guess, I know that it's a requirement from the state when you fill out that permit, and again, I'm speaking from my own personal experience here. You have to get the municipal officers to approve that license before it goes to the state. And since the period of time that's allowed for the sidewalk is April 1st to December 1st, we're kind of already past that, so I think that if, I guess what I would ask is staff communicate to the several businesses that I believe intend to continue as they have for the last few years, notify them that they need that permit. And just thinking towards the future, we may want to amend that prior code that sets a date, because it's not really clear off the amendment I submitted last year. So, just as I often work with my brain, I saw this opportunity and said, wait a second, it seems like an opportune time to tie the two together, but I don't have any issues with the permit itself.
Great, thank you. And we have that noted down for reference? Okay, anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yep.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, that takes us to item nine this evening, under new business. And tonight, we do have six department presentations, starting off the next couple of weeks for our budget process. And first up this evening, we do have Parks and Rec with Director Summer.
For your information, the page number in your book is page 114, and there is a handout as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, residents of Saco. I'm excited to present to you the fiscal year 2026 budget to you tonight. As City Administrator John Behanko said, it's in the budget book, page 114. Before we start really diving into the budget, I wanted to bring this slide to your attention. Really, it captures over the last 13 years of our budgets over at the Parks and Recreation Department from fiscal year 2014 through fiscal year 2026. And from fiscal year 2014 through fiscal year 2024, taxpayers have been supporting the Parks and Recreation Department roughly 50-50. 50% taxpayers, 50% revenue. And in 2025 and 2026, the department has been able to reduce our dependency on the taxpayers from around 45% to 50%, down to 30%. During fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2026, we have been able to reduce our request of taxpayer support from almost $1 million in fiscal year 2021 to just under $800,000 in fiscal year 2026. This is a reduction of roughly $200,000 in taxpayer's support for the Parks and Recreation budget, while our expenses increased roughly $600,000 to just under $2.6 million this year in fiscal 2026. Our program fees during this time has slightly increased last year in 2025, and still remains under some of the surrounding communities' program fees. And our increase of participants and programs have allowed us to offset the $200,000 of reduction from fiscal year 2021 with the $600,000 increase to today through revenue, through program fees. So as I present to you the 2026 budget to you, I am proud that we have been able to reduce our dependency on the taxpayers while still providing the state-of-the-art programs and parks that we have all become accustomed to. So organizational chart, right now, we are sitting at 17 full-time staff. We have seven full-time staff out in Parks, seven full-time staff in Rec, two administrative staff, and myself, I equal 17. I am requesting and asking for an increase of one recreational staff, which will be used for as a programmer, two position for the recreation department. And the reason why I'm asking is the Parks and Recreation Department continues to grow at a rapid pace. This position would be a programmer, too, and their role would be working with the seniority program, as well as helping for special events, the front office, and the after-the-bell program. As our senior program continues to grow and the department restructuring of Amelia Foster and Steve Brown being promoted to Assistant Director, this additional position is vital to us to continue to grow our programs and offering within the community. The Parks and Recreation Department offers roughly 70 different types of programs with over 300 different types of activities. A program can have multiple activities, and for example, our senior bus trip program is one program with 90 different activities. A soccer program is one program with nine different activities because of the youth and age gaps. And our summer camp program is one program with five different activities with all our summer camps in TCTA, which stands for Theater Camp. So for us, Parks and Recreation in action. Seniority, we do 90 bus trips a year, 17 luncheon learns, two trips, with one being international and one being domestic, four meals that bring the seniors together in our monthly breakfast club. We employ 125 seasonal staff for Parks, lifeguards, summer camp, and after the bell. The apartment puts on 15 special events and supports another 35 special events for outside organizations. Volunteering for our program is essential, which we have 35 piping plover monitors, 135 Earth Day volunteers that come on April 25th this year, 10 stewards of the park volunteers that meet once a month to help keep our parks clean, and over 150 volunteers, coaches, that help us with our youth programs throughout the year. We have been recognized for TRID City USA for the 15th consecutive year, and from July 1st, 2024, to March 31st, 2025, we've had 15,040 total number of registrations for all our programs, which is a 7% increase over last year. Some of the achievements that we're proud of. One is our teen place, which is a teen drop-in program that meets on Wednesdays and Thursdays at the community center from 5 to 8 o'clock at night, and our Friday evenings where we take our teens to special trips throughout the community and out in southern Maine. We planned our first trip to the Junior Theater Festival in Atlanta, Georgia. A twin-city theater academy worked on this for over a year, and we brought 34 performers and 40 chaperones to the festival. In the seniority program, this group, we organized travels as far as Nashville and Kentucky, as well as our first international trip to Italy, which we'll leave in about a week and a half. We planned over 90 bus trips to local venues, including theaters, restaurants, concerts, islands, museums. Provided 17 luncheon learn sessions with a variety of topics, and an in-house monthly breakfast club with four special meals that included our annual Thanksgiving lunch, our spring barbecue, a lobster bake, and we actually did two dinner dances, one being the Hoedown and one being the Spring Fling. We developed a picnic in the paddle night on the Saco River with participants of all ages to join us with kayaks, canoes, and paddle boards for an evening on the Saco River accompanied by a picnic dinner over at Diamond Riverside. And on May 15th, we are still scheduled on time to create the splash pad over at the community center in partnership with the Bedford-Saco Rotary to continue to provide recreational opportunities for all to enjoy. So the budget changes in 2025 to 2026. As I stated, the Parks and Recreation budgets will be requested at $2,595,313,000, which is an increase of $272,000, or 11.7%. Now, we asked why. So increase in staffing is a portion of it. Increase in one staff headcount is roughly $50,000, but also, along with this request, is the COLA increases for our full-time staff, which roughly comes in about 12.7%. The seasonal staff, we talked about 125 seasonal staff that we have, we had to increase their wages to make it competitive to our surrounding departments as we were beginning to fall behind. That increase was 6%. That brought us up to minimum wage and close to competitiveness around our community, as well as a portion of that increase of 11% is additional seasonal staff as our summer camp and after-the-bell programs continue to grow. Increase in the programs, as the more staff you add, the more programs we bring on, that increases really truly operating costs, which is about $68,000. Programs itself, with the new programs, the new participants, the new equipment, the new, then the things that associate with the departments, and the programs represent 11.41%. And to round it out, the vehicle maintenance, facilities upkeep, software and utilities came in at roughly 6% increase. So as I stated, 75% of the $272,000 of staffing. $204,557 comes in about 75% for the cost of living or the COLA increases, along with the increase of staffing of one personal staff and seasonal staff to help us with our expanded programs and offerings that we provide to the city. 25% of the operating portion of the increase comes in at $68,000. Increase in participants in our programs. We many times fill up our programs pretty rapidly, and we have wait lists. When possible, we do our best to increase our program levels and size participant levels to ensure that everyone can take part. We have added 18 new programs this year, and they are for youth programs, disc golf, game club, baseball softball clinic, teen cooking classes, and the Junior Theater Festival. For our family programs, we've offered the Spring Fling, which happens in the May down off of Diamond Riverside Park. Family game night trivia, Internet Rennet, Puzzle for the Loser. We opened the gym on Sundays, and we brought in the paddle to picnic on the Saco River. For our senior programs, we brought in senior peace classes, line dancing classes, bus trips, and our international trip. And our Parks Department got into it as well by providing canoe and kayak rental space at Diamond Riverside, beach cleanup buckets at Bayview Beach, picnic tables and benches for both Diamond Riverside and the Cascade Falls Trail. So this slide represents pretty much the last few minutes I've talked about, which is our increases. $126,000 for salaries in a full-time position, $78,000, 11% for seasonal positions, and added increases to their wages. The biggest portion of the operating budget is the programs at $43,600, and this concludes really in the end of the day, transportation costs for our summer camps. Chilling program that we take up to Houston for overnight camp, our senior programs, our JTF, our team programs. These are all the things that rerepresent in this $43,000 increase, about 15%. So again, the budget is increasing $272,000, or 11.1%. So the question is, Brian, you're coming to us and you're asking for $272,000 more. But we are very different than most other departments. For us, we can come in, we can offset most of the revenue, if not all the revenue, as we move forward. And in fiscal year 2026, we are estimating our revenue to increase by $300,000 to $1.8 million. So really, at the end of the day, the increase in revenue will offset, not just offset the increase of the Parks and Recreation budget, but it will also add some money back to the budget appropriation moving forward. Since 2021, the Parks and Recreation Department across the taxpayers have decreased by almost 18% from $979,000 down to $795,000. And over the same time, the Parks and Recreation Department has reduced its dependency on taxpayers' financial support from 49.5% to 30.5%. Our goal each year is to continue to provide state-of-the-art programs and activities Our goal each year is to continue to provide state-of-the-art programs and activities for the entire community while reducing the financial burden on our taxpayers. Again, this, this really is the crux of my budget, which is at the end of the day, over thirteen years, the Parks and Recreation has not only kept our requests from taxpayers at a minimum, where in two thousand fourteen, our request to taxpayers was seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and two thousand twenty-six, our request from taxpayers is seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, of an increase over those thirteen years of seventy-five thousand dollars, or just under six thousand dollars a year. So we have been able to expand the programs, expand our offering, expand the department without costing taxpayers and putting the burden on the back of the taxpayers. Some of the new things that we're excited about in 2026. Fixing the drainage and road at the Saco Middle School backfields. This will allow access for emergency vehicles down to the lower fields at Saco Middle School, as well as handicap accessibility, which is dire needed. It will also allow proper drainage and enhanced gameplay at our athletic facilities. To increase our recreational programs for our community, every year, we strive to add ten to twelve new programs every year. The last four or five years, we have done a fabulous job, and we will continue to strive to add those programs. Our senior, seniority trips, already have planned their 2026 trips. One is international, which is going to Ireland, and the one is our domestic is the Canadian Rockies in the fall of 2026. What the most thing that I'm excited about is to develop a design when the schools begin to vacate the property over at Pepperell Park for our destination park. And my goal is to come to, to you in front of council sometime in June to create, to talk about the design, to create a committee so we can begin to get that ball rolling so we are ready and fully prepared when the time comes. I'd like to thank my, my hardworking, dedicated, and passionate staff at Saco Parks and Recreation. They are the reason why the programs continue to grow, the participants exceed expectations, and the parks look beautiful, is all because of them. I have had the privilege of working with these people every day, and I am thankful that they have chosen to work here for the city of Saco. They are the reason why this department is above all others Parks and Recreation Departments in the state of Maine, and they are the main reason why those recreation departments and parks departments look to us to see what we are doing and how they can improve. And at Saco Parks and Recreation, we are truly building community through people, parks, and programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Director Summers. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Summers. I really appreciated the presentation, and I appreciated the way you laid out in your first slide, the increase in expenditures, but also the increase in revenue and the shifting share that's going from the taxpayer to the users of your service and the fees. And you spoke to this a little bit already directly, but maybe just if you could say a few more words on how we make sure it remains affordable for the families in Saco as, as the fee payers kind of take an increasing share of your department's budget.
Sure. So we, with all our camps and after-the-bell, the bigger ticket items, we do a, we have a scholarship program, and in that scholarship program, you have a level of either ninety percent, seventy-five percent, or fifty percent, depending on where your financial fees come into it. We never give off, up a hundred percent because really we believe that every child and every parent should have skin in the game for behavioral purposes and accountability and so forth. And our other programs, as the smaller ones, our youth soccer programs, our youth basketball programs, these are for lesser, lesser fees, those we do offer again the same ninety percent. So on an average, the, the city of Saco roughly passes out scholarships of about forty thousand dollars is what we give out. About ten percent of, of our budget comes to a tune of about forty participants that will, that will be allowed to come to summer camp and after the bell, that does a reduced pay for those programs. So no child ever goes, goes behind. Now, if there's a, a senior circumstance, a child cannot afford it, we go get scholarships to offset it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I was gonna let people with questions go first, but since there aren't any, I guess that's an example of a good presentation. No, I just have comments, and I guess they're really just directed at, at council and the public at large. I don't, I was gonna say I'm amazed, but I'm not amazed because it's, it's Director Summers' ability to deliver a budget in a consistent manner every year and be on target. I was gonna say amazing, but it's impressive because at this point, year after year, it can't be amazing anymore. It's impressive. And likewise, I think the response that you see with residents and non-residents, because in those numbers, there are many non-residents that also participate in the programs and come to our parks, obviously, but that demand has just, has seen such an exponential growth from, from when Director Summers was hired in 2017 to today. I mean, I remember having the conversation when we discussed going to the million-dollar revenue, and that was, you know, like a, a big, big moment, cleared it so easily. And, and at least in my opinion, I mean, that's a real testament to Director Summers and all the extremely quality, qualified individuals that work for that department. You know, again, I should have said this to begin with, I am on the advisory committee, but it's, it's truly one of the more enjoyable committees I participate in because it's so positive, just not just amongst the people on it, but it's consistently hearing about the innovations and the new programming, and then not being afraid when one doesn't work, say, okay, we're not gonna do that. You know, they don't dig in and say, we're gonna keep going that way. It's like, okay, let's find something else. And then to hear about how successful they are, it's, again, it's, it's rewarding from my standpoint, but it's also, it, it's a major contributor to the overall growth of our community and, you know, that whole livability component of living in Saco. I know for me, when Director Summers was hired in 2017, my, my big thing was our parks had been neglected for, for decades, really, and that's not any one reason. Obviously, it's generally funding, but, you know, Director Summers having the vision, we've gone light speed, far faster than I ever thought we would get to, which again is, is amazing. You look at Diamond Park, for example, if you haven't been over there, go look at it. My entire childhood, it was a park I went to, it was always neglected, it was derelict, it was, you know, not somewhere you wanted to take your kids. You look at it now, and it's just like, wow, someone had the vision, and we went about, you know, putting it in place, and I, I think it's one of the, you know, maybe still hidden gems of Saco, but hopefully it won't be, you know, as we move forward. Just one of the things I did want to point out to council, again, as we talk about growth and, and how we expand programming, you know, we say we, but for years, I go back, several administrators with Director Summers, we had discussed, again, you look at that revenue and you see that we're returning twenty-eight thousand dollars to the general fund, and, you know, on the surface, you can look at it and say, oh, that's, that's great, but at the same time, I think it's important to recognize that maybe as we move forward, and again, we've had these, these discussions about the potential of creating like a special revenue fund that would allow that revenue or portions of the revenue that's above and beyond to return to the department so that they can use it towards, again, expansions of parks, and as we've seen, we have a pretty fantastic, in my opinion, you know, plan for, for Pepperell Park, and we gotta figure out how we fund that. So I just, I think that's, I just wanna throw it out because I know it's the first time that council probably has heard of that. I, I certainly have advocated it, going back three administrators now, and will continue to do so. But again, I, it's great that we started off right with this. I look at this, and I'm like, wow, that, that represents thirteen of my budgets that I've been here for on this, you know, diagram or a spreadsheet, and it really says all you really need to see. And when I look at it, what I see is that this, what the taxpayers pay for is really only the non-revenue producing components of the department. I haven't broken it out that way, but I can just eyeball it and tell you that you're covering parks, you're covering buildings with the taxpayer funds, and that's been consistent through the years, and it hasn't always been that way, and I think it's important to point that out because, like I said, it hasn't been that way. I can show you budgets, my early year budgets, or prior to my time here, I can show you those budgets, and, and it was a struggle in this department, and I just think it's phenomenal where we are, and I would agree with Director Summers that I think we have the best park and rec staff and director in the state of Maine. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Edwards?
I will disclose upfront that I also am liaison for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I will say that the numbers are great about Director Summers and his wonderful staff. What the numbers don't really reflect is the joy that I see in these programs. You have summer staff, high schoolers mostly, who come back every year because of the relationships they build with these kids, and some of those kids ending up also being summer advisors as well. The, you know, and I count myself as, because of my age, as one of the seniority members, and the joy that you see at the Spring Fling and some other activities, it's, it really speaks to the quality of life, and we need something to make, give us joy at this time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hewitt?
First, I want to say thank you because my kids have grown up here and used your services many, many times and made it bearable to get through a very long winter in Maine with three boys. I have a few quick questions. My first is you mentioned scholarship in kids.
Yes.
Do we also do that with seniors if they can't afford to participate in things?
We do. We don't have as many requests, but we do do that.
Okay. And can you clarify, just because we hear mention of age-friendly Saco and seniority, how you each fill different needs?
Sure. So, so the Parks and Recreation, the recreation side of, of the, the senior programs and the seniority is, for us, is about, we recreate active seniors, seniors who are able to get out of the house, seniors who are looking to be transformed in a, in a play or a bus or, or socializing and so forth. There is some crossover, but again, most of the time, we are really striving to, to recreate and make these active seniors, to give them opportunities to be a part of a group, be part of an organization. Where age-friendly is built more on the idea of, of helping the, the more of the needy or the people who need, you know, buckets, sand buckets, or the handy neighbor program that they offer for the, for the housing and so forth. They do a phenomenal job. I know they do a month, a monthly meal program down at the Yalox Lodge as well. You know, so we, we kind of overcharge a little bit, but they're real much more the active group where they're more the, the, what's the word?
Assistant space.
Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Great presentation, Ryan, and I echo all the sentiments that have been made this, this evening on behalf of the department. I do want to talk a little bit more deeply about the connection to age-friendly Saco, and I think you described it well. We have a population of seniors who are active, who can get in their car and come to the community center, but I, I do think the distinction is that age-friendly has more of a focus of those who are trying to age in place, maybe a little bit more infirm, a little less financial resources, and, and so there are two, two needs that I think are, are being filled by both agencies, so I get that. And I, I do know that the big advantage with your programs is you can actually generate revenue, so I, as a bean counter, I'm very respectful of that and appreciative that that can, can occur. So I just want to talk a little bit about the senior program position. You are one of the few departments that is asking for an add-to-staff.
Yep.
I want to go on record to say that I'm supportive of that. However, I, we do have a, a, a request from age-friendly, which I view as a de facto add-to-staff, where they're looking for some well-deserved and needed assistance with some of their executive director roles. And so I, I think the, the optics here for me as a representative of the taxpayer is the potential duplication of job duties, maybe there isn't any, or whether, more importantly, whether or not we might be able to collaborate a little more closely with age-friendly in terms of offering resources from your department to them to help in the management of their programs. I do know, because I, I see some of the food being prepared in my own kitchen at home, that my wife and several others from age-friendly have been very open to volunteering for your, your meals programs, and, and so you're tapping into a volunteer group of, of citizens, concerned and dedicated citizens, but it's, it's saving you money.
Yep.
So, so I, I think I just, I just want to get that issue on the table and give you a chance to talk a little bit about how there may be some opportunity for some collaboration if we add this position and a de facto position with age-friendly.
So when we talk about the position, the full-time position, so right now, a starting program with two positions, twenty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents, that's what it will be in July first for the program. The position that we have right now is being filled on a seasonal base. So we have somebody who's running pretty much a seasonal line as a senior programmer, running about twenty-seven to twenty-nine hours, just trying to keep her under the thirty-hour minimum threshold for being classified as a, for a part-time, year-round part-time position. So right now, she's working about fourteen hundred, almost fifteen hundred hours a year at twenty dollars an hour, so it comes in to be about twenty-eight thousand dollars. So I'm looking at this position, saying, you know what, you're still gonna help with the bus trips, you're still gonna help with the, with the special events, you're still gonna help with all the duties that you're currently doing, but what you're gonna give me by adding the thirteen hours a week more is office help, because when we talk about recreation, when we talk about the office, the office doesn't, doesn't sit in the office for thirty-seven and a half hours. They are running part of the programs as well as after-the-bell programs. So Amanda Marong is over at pre-K, Lauren's in one-two, K-one-two, Lauren does the, the theater program, Amanda does the cheer program. So they're pulled out of these, out of this focus as well. Yes, their main focus is the office, but because of how we got the growth in these programs, I began to start stealing everybody from the positions to create this growth. So this would be another person to help with the office, to help with registrations for senior programs, to help with registrations, because literally we took three and a half days for summer camp registrations to catch up. We did three hundred and ninety applications for registrations for summer camp in seven days. So we are eighty percent full for our recreation department, but we pretty much pulled the staff off of the summer camp. So when you're looking at this in the sense of she's gonna be doing all the guaranteed programs that she already doing, but now she's gonna be going into the, the office, she'll be using the overseen and helping out with, with after-the-bell, because there are days, especially on Wednesday, when the TA does the short days every other Wednesday, that we are lacking staff, or we have a hundred and twenty kids, and we're running it with pretty much a twelve, ten, twelve-man staff, and eight of those twelve, ten, eight, ten, twelve-man staff are your full-time staff, trying to keep it going for, until the high school kids get there. We run our ratio, we try to run our ratio at seven to one. Summer camps, we run at six to one, except for K-one, where we're gonna run closer to five to one staff ratio. So she's gonna get pulled in much more different directions that will help me offset and continue to grow these, this department and programs that benefit us. Could be some collaboration, I, I think we do a pretty good job collaborating with, with Saco Age Friendly. You know, we, we work better with them, we, we've gone to helping out, and Amelia has done a wonderful job, and, and she'll, she'll definitely be brought, brought on board to the Saco Age Friendly Board as well, to, to collaborate as well.
So I, I think you answered my question, and, and the answer, if, if I'm gonna, if I could paraphrase, is that there is no, there is no additional capacity in this position.
She's gonna be, it's gonna be tough.
And I, I appreciate that and respect that, and I, I think that's fine, but I think that's important for this council to hear, when we talk about supported entities and we're being asked to fund that de facto position, there isn't, whoops, there isn't any help available. So I, I think it was important for us to hear that, and for us as a council to digest that, and, and when we have to, when, when age-friendly comes before us and asks us for that help, I think we ought to keep that perspective in mind. I do know you collaborate as best you can. I have, I, I know that for a fact. So I think that, my wife tells me you have the best kitchen in the...
And she tells me you're phenomenal in the kitchen as well.
Yeah, yeah, right. I, I stay out of the way. Yeah, yeah, right. I, I stay out of the way. But I, I think it's, it's good synergy. I think, I think the synergy that I've seen has been good. I, I've gone to a few of the joint events, and I, and I do think that you do what you can, working together. So, so I appreciate the, the perspective. I respect it, and I think for, for, for the rest of us, I think, keep that in your back pocket when we start to talk about the justification of that, that de facto add to staff with age-friendly. So, thank you.
If I might add, if, if council at this, throughout this budget process decides not to fund this full-time position, we would have to reallocate $28,000 back to the seasonal line, so we don't fall behind on what we're doing. Because if we just cut it completely out of the, out of the budget, that 27 hours that we're running, that person right now would no longer be in the budget. So please understand if we make that decision, which is perfectly, you know, I understand if you do, that we're going to have to make sure that we reallocate the $28,000 into the seasonal line, so we can stay status quo.
Counsel Hewitt?
One last question. Given what you said about seniority and age-friendly, when you're talking about this new park, is there any plan in the future to have a dedicated senior citizen center that you can both work through to use for the kitchens and other events?
So there is. And again, this is a little long down the road, and I know when the Stuckville building, that Young School was built, one of the conversations was that could possibly be, if the schools vacate that, that property, that that could be a senior citizens building for us. You know, when Jeremy Ray and I talked about it, we had kind of designed it in the sense that we could expand it and utilize that space. So it really comes down to what they see that building used for them. I know they've talked about possible some usage. So without saying yes or no, the idea would be at Young School, at that space, as the modulators would go, and that space would be allocated for the senior, senior citizens program.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just had one quick question. I know on your to-do list for 2026, you have the Pepper Park design. Where in the plans will we be presented with designs for the wastewater treatment area that we're hoping to develop into a park or open space?
So actually, I, I just reached out to Howard to see those plans that were originally kind of came about. I have not talked to him moving forward since, since really that project has, has started off, but that's something I will definitely get back to you and let you know.
That is still in the works?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, perfect.
To my knowledge, it's still in the works.
Okay. All right. And I think that's it for questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
Okay, next up, we have the police department with Chief Clemence this evening, and that is on page 123 of your book. And the city administrator will pass out a handout. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, counsel. Appreciate you affording me the opportunity to come up here and talk to you tonight. I'll start off, this is our organizational chart that shows how the police department's broken down with our staffing and where everything is. This is our current staffing level for full-time positions. As you'll see, we're funded for 57 full-time employees. That's sworn officers and civilian positions. Wanted to talk a minute about hiring. So we're doing actually much, much better. Things are going, to say that they're going well is an understatement. I'm actually excited. So you'll see on here that the civilian positions, which is dispatch and non-dispatch civilian positions, they're full. We have promoted some folks to sergeant. Those are full. We still have vacancy for detectives, school resource officers, one lieutenant, five patrol officers. Of those positions, you got to understand, when we fill one of those positions, it usually comes from patrol. The good news is that we have four people currently in background that are pretty far along in the background process. We have two folks that are graduating from the academy at the end of May. We have some folks scheduled for the PT test, which is a state mandatory thing. Right now, it's the alert and the PT test. They do have something in rulemaking right now to eliminate the alert test, but right now, we still have it, so we still have to give that, that process. And then, on top of that, we have quite a few applicants. So things are going very well for us, I think, on the hiring side. We did post externally for SRO, and one candidate that was selected immediately withdrew for personal reasons. The other one went pretty far through the process, and then the organization that they work for is offering a lot more money, so they decided to stay. So we will, we're actively back in that process again. Any questions on that? Just to show the police department in action. So calls for service, these are not fire or EMS calls, these are just police. 23,489. We conducted 3,415 traffic stops, and out of that, not including civil tickets, because traffic tickets are violations and not criminal, you'll see that we had 632 criminal violations. That's OUIs, criminal speed. So pretty, pretty good number of criminal summonses. Under community engagement, we still, as I know all of you have been to National Night Out, that's a huge event. Amy Sinclair, my administrative assistant, does the SOX for Seniors program. And then we've been having more meetings with community groups, both with our, with our community engagement specialists, my lieutenant. We've been getting out more, not only with local groups, but also with UNE. You'll see under the social worker, Rebecca Lyons, that she had 1,140 outreach attempts with 850 contacts. To say that she's busy is an understatement. And then the other thing that we're seeing that's constantly trending up is this Freedom of Access Act request. We, normally the clerk's office gets ones for the city, we get them for the police department. In calendar year '24, we did 327 requests. That's up from 240 in 2023, and I can tell you, year-to-date, we're already trending 25% higher. And what's, really takes a lot of time is more and more, it's the video that people are asking for. Some of our accomplishments for 2025, recruitment and retention efforts are working. Like I said, we're hiring new employees. We achieved our statewide accreditation that we've been working on for quite some time. The former firearms range, we got that all cleaned out, decontaminated. That is a brand-new fitness facility, as well as a, a training area for the officers to do their mechanics of arrest, restraint, and control training. And then again, community efforts are ongoing. We continue with National Night Out, SOX for Seniors, meeting with community groups. And then I was able to do at least one class over at the University of New England. Unfortunately, it was when we had the snowstorm, so I kept getting, getting rescheduled, so I'm hoping to, to, that next semester, we can do some more of that. I found that very rewarding. It was a great group. And then completing work on the radio system. In 2023, we get some congressionally designated spending to upgrade our radio system. It took a long time, as you know, with supply chain, to get things in. I'm happy to say that the equipment has been put on the fire department tower. They're actually, today, they were on another tower, and they'll be up tomorrow. Once that is done, they have a way to go around and test the radio strength and frequencies. And then, when they determine where the gap is, they'll go up on a third tower. And then once that, that's completed, then we'll make the transition over to P25, 800 megahertz. And then again, I've been bringing in some guest lecturers. I have a retired sheriff from the ninth largest police department in the country that stops in once a year to provide some speaking on leadership and other things having to do with law enforcement. And then I also have a recently retired lieutenant general that comes in and talks to my folks about leadership, and has experience not only from the military, but now he's in the private sector. He can give them both. Goals for 2026. The biggest thing that's going to take most of our time is we have been in a process with York County to replace, we're all, pretty much the entire county is on an antiquated CAT RMS system. So we're going in collaboratively, using the county as the purchasing agent to try to save money. And so we're down to selecting, we've got it down to the final two vendors. We're going to make a selection, and then we'll be coming back to the city administrator with what those costs will be. We have been setting money aside in the capital, and then over a period of the next couple, three years, we'll integrate, I think all the agencies will be moving to one CAT RMS system, which is going to be a, a big project. And we're going to complete any, any issues remaining with the radio system upgrade, continue our community engagement programs, continue employee development. You know, our employees are our most valuable asset. And then, we've had a really good relationship with the police union leadership and human resources on continuing some creative recruiting efforts. When you look at our budget for 2026, it's, it looks like a big number. But what's happened is, as you know, we did some, in order to maintain market competition, we did some pay raises. We did not come back and ask the council for any money. So I was able to, and I think I'm still going to be able to get through the year absorbing that within my budget, which has been an interesting task, but we, we've been doing it. So the, the majority of what you see as far as the increase is salary and benefits. Understanding that that's a, a big chunk. I sat down with probably almost an entire day with my, with my executive staff over at the police department to go through our entire operating budget. And when I say we went through it, we went line by line, we went vendor by vendor, looking at what do we need, what can we let go for 2026, you know, truly look at the need. And I'm, I'm very proud that we came back with only a 1.7% increase to operating. That was eliminating a software package. And then, again, supply chain issues, we're getting, we're behind on getting police cars built because it takes so long to get equipment in. And looking at the mileage, I decided to eliminate one of our police cruisers for next year's budget. I'll probably ask for it back next year, but I, I thought it was important that if we could do that this year, to do it. This is just a snapshot of some revenues that we see come in, witness fees, school resource officer from the middle school, then there's some general revenues, CCW permits, things like that, parking revenue, the Thornton Academy school resource officer, alarm billing for false alarms, and then there's a small transfer from the Camp Ellis Fund. So again, to kind of go over the changes for, from '25 to '26, that 1,120,906 net increase is, is in personnel. That's cost of living adjustments and market adjustments. Again, to maintain that competitive, it's, it's competitive right now. We have to maintain a competitive edge. Additionally, the increase reflects current vacancies, supported by strong recruiting strategy to fill these positions. I'm very confident we're going to be in a very good place in the coming fiscal year. And again, I think I discussed this. This is our 1.7% increase. It's a $12,537 net increase. And when we first started doing this with all of our vendors, our projections, and of course, we're calling them in January, asking them, where are you going to be in a year? And so when we did that process, it was a 6.56% total increase. But again, looking at where we can make some changes, where we have done better motor vehicle repairs. We changed our police cruisers to a different manufacturer. Repair costs have gone down, so we took some money out of there. So again, moving everything around, I'm very happy with what we came up with. And I think just, again, at the end for me, this has been an interesting year. Accreditation was a lot of work, couldn't have done it without our staff. And then again, going down through the budget and finding everything that we could, knowing that the increase on the salary line was going to be significant, we did everything we could to try to minimize that impact on the operational side. So couldn't have done it without my folks. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. Do we have any questions or comments for the chief? City administrator?
I just want to make a comment that this year in '25, the chief and his staff has worked very diligently to make sure they could fund the increases without going back to contingency. And, and it was important this year, and recognize the council for stepping up to make this happen, because much of the turnaround came about after the increases. And I think that's important for people to know that, you know, we're in an environment where we had to make a change, council saw that, the need for it, and moved forward on it. So I think, I wanted to thank the council publicly again for making that move, but I also want to thank the chief for trying to keep that within the 2025 budget. Going into 2026, he and I talked, it was important that he stayed at his 57 sworn officers. So that's why you're seeing the rollout this year. So hopefully, it will level off for fiscal year '27, and we'll keep moving forward. So right now, we're in collective bargaining with the police union, and we'll advise you when we, when we complete that.
Thank you. Counsel Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, chief, for that presentation. It really, it's admirable, the turnaround you've had with hiring. That was a, a real challenge for the department and for the city, and to hear your success is, I'm really impressed with. My question is actually really small, and I'm not sure if it's best directed to you or the city administrator, but as the liaison to the Coastal Waters Commission, I just wanted to inquire about that small transfer from the Camp Ellis Fund, and, and what its purpose is for, and, and the rationale, and, and what it's being spent on.
I believe in the past, what that's been used for is when we're able to run the Harbor Patrol boat, that amount goes into fuel and everything having to do with the boat. That's, that's a piece that comes in. That's what we've used it for in the past.
And is there intent to restart the Harbor Patrol, or where are we with that?
If staffing recovers, then absolutely. That's a partnership that we have with the city of Bedeford. They're in the same place with staffing, so I think once we get back to where we're both in good shape, yes, we absolutely want to get back out in the river.
I appreciate your answer.
Thank you. Yes.
Counsel Johnston?
Thank you. Well, first, I just want to congratulate you on your accreditation. I, I know that's been many years for SACCO in the making, so it's, it's awesome that it came to fruition. I had several questions, but I have seemed to misplace that piece of paper. But I, I think overall, you answered most of my questions. The one I, I did have that came to mind was if, you know, all things considered, if we were in a perfect hiring world, what amount of sworn officers do you think a city the size of SACCO should have? I'm not holding you to it, I'm just...
No, no, that's, that's a, I, I get asked that question a lot. It's a complex question.
Yeah.
We've done a lot of research. The deputy chief and I have done a lot of research. And if you, there's, so you can look at FBI statistics, and they'll give you a number. You look at calls for service, they give you a number. So it really, every time we look at something, typically comes back to, well, it just depends based on your community. I think for a community our size, with what we're seeing with traffic and everything else, I think an agency, over a period of time, growing to 44 sworn officers would be beneficial, but I certainly don't think that's something tomorrow. But I think if we start chipping away at that over the next five years, that would be an ideal place to get to.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. I, I know it's, you know, subjective question, but I, I do think it's, it's important for council to hear, but also members of the public, because, you know, often we hear about, you know, using their words, lack of enforcement or what have you, and I always say, well, it takes people. And so we have to recognize that, you know, we need a set number that, again, I would rely on those out in the field to give us those numbers. But I, my personal opinion, I, I would say, I think we need more police officers, just based on the demands we all hear. And I certainly would support that going forward. And then just a, a plug in that sense, I can recall, when I left the Marine Corps, nobody was hiring at that time, given it was recession. But there was, you know, again, because this was a, a field I was interested in, applied to several areas outside of, of my hometown, and it was kind of like, need not apply. And I looked at it going, I just left the Marine Corps in combat, right? As a combat marine, you would think that I would be first on the list, but they just, they weren't hiring. I guess, you know, a lot of things have changed. Obviously, I think we've all worked to get those pays up to a suitable level. I, I think that there's still a lot of, that's where I'm looking for, I don't want to say benefit... I don't want to say benefit, but nobleness to the career field. And so, for the parents that are out there, you've got a young woman or a man that's looking for something to do, I, I just would highly encourage them to, you know, look in this career field. I think it's taken a hit over the last several years, and we need to kind of bring back, you know, efforts towards encouraging younger folks to get, you know, I'm an old man now, I, I can't apply. But certainly, I, I, I wouldn't, yeah, my son's sitting right there, I certainly wouldn't dissuade him from, when he got to that point, from, you know, looking into this career field. So, just think it's important we show the support for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. And thank you, Jack, for that presentation.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the current year budget gymnastics you've gone through. You are recommended on that fine-tooth comb, you ran through those expenses, and we appreciate that. This is going to sound fiscally irresponsible on my part, but I was hoping you'd come for an add to staff, because that would mean you were fully staffed. So I'm looking forward to the day that you do that, okay?
Yes, sir.
Whether I'm on the council or not, I'm going to come and speak in favor for all that hard work. So in the area of recruitment and retention, which I think you've really done a fabulous job with so far, I'm a little curious to hear from you regarding your opinion about the potential impact on, on a couple of things. One would be the York County Training Center, what if any impact that may have on availability of personnel. Similarly, your engagement at UNE in the criminology department, whether or not that's planting seeds for interns or whatever the case may be. And then finally, and I know we're working on this, and we've got a, a project that's, that seems to be, I don't know where it is in terms of school street, and making housing available to you, which I personally think is an area that we need to, as a council, not only for your department, but for other departments within the city, to, to, to really pay attention to in our housing policy. So tho- those three components, if you could just quickly give me some thoughts about how you feel that might help in your recruitment efforts?
Certainly. The York County Training Facility, I just saw some recent pictures, they've got steel up, they're doing, it's going quickly. It's going up, it's going up fast. I think that's going to be a huge, a huge addition to York County. I was on the building committee, and I can tell you that when the building was designed, we designed it so that hopefully at some point, the state decides to have a non-residential academy, and that facility will be able to do that. Unfortunately, it seems like statewide, there still is this desire to have the live-in academy, which, me personally, I think we're missing out on folks that are looking to change careers. You know, if, if you're in your 30s and you get a couple of children, you're not going away for 18 weeks to Vassalboro, you're not going to do it. So I've been, I've been very clear with Maine Chiefs and everybody else that I think we need to, I, I do think they need to have a residential component. Maine's a rural state, so they do need to have that. But I think down here in Southern Maine, I do think that they need to have a non-residential component, but for whatever reason, they, people keep fighting it. But I think it's the right thing to do. I think when that building is up and running, that's going to be the time when we need to try to do something. I will say that in 1995, the academy had, I believe it was 20 full-time employees. Here we are in 2025, and they have 14. And that was with the addition of taking on parole and probation and providing some training for them. So, part of that is, the state really needs to fund the academy. It's not fair to them, you know, we come to them saying, hey, we want this non-residential academy, and they don't even have the staff, you know, they're, they're struggling with what they've got to do, the residential. So I think the state needs to step up a little bit on, on that, if you want to provide the same level of training. University of New England, I can tell you, I've had, not only going to University of New England, we've had, I've had a, a young man from the middle school come over and wanted to do a shot, job shadow, spent a couple hours with him, showed him around the police department, that's something he wants to do. So our efforts are, at least in my opinion, is we need to look down the road. So what we're doing now is to prepare the Saco Police Department from, for 10 years from now. So we're doing all the work now to get people in the door and do that, but then it's really building that solid foundation so that 10 years down the road, we have succession planning, we have a deep bench, we're doing all that work now. And hopefully, I get to see some of the fruits of our labor, but if not, we're still, we're still doing that work, because it's the right thing for this community, to know that 10 years from now, things are going to be going, staying in a really good direction. And I do enjoy the, going over and talking to the folks in the criminology department, a lot of great questions. As far as housing, that I don't know that I have a great answer for you. I know that there's a lot of communities that are trying to do that. Just right now, I think the cost, I'm not sure what the issue is. What I will tell you that's been very good for me is that the people that we are getting to apply now, they're local. So the housing hasn't been as much of an issue. And then folks that would be looking to come from out of state, we're very clear with them, here's, here's what the housing market looks like, and we do have a Realtor or some Realtors that we put them with, so that they can work through that process. So people are very clear coming up here, you know, what the housing market is. But for folks that come from, you know, New York State down in that area, that's not a problem for them. So, so I'm, like I said, I'm very, very happy with the direction that we're going. And I appreciate everyone saying out, you know, especially you, Counselor Hatch, and everybody here. Again, I agree with Mr. Bohanko, I can't thank you enough for what you did to, to get us in the right market to hire people. I think that was phenomenal on everybody's part. You've been extremely supportive, which I can't tell you how much I appreciate. But we're in a good place now. I'm excited, I really am. And the only reason I didn't come to you is, I'd like to get to full staff, see what that looks like, and then look at where we need to do some things, and then at some point, come back to you, or come back next year, and maybe start, you know, chipping away at that a little bit.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jack, this is more of a, I don't want to get too into the weeds on this, but I figure since it's a budget night, though, it's a public, you know, are listening in, I'm, I'm curious to get your input on this uptick that we've had, that you've had in a FOIA requests. Can you speak to the sources of these? Are these people contesting arrests? Are these the First Amendment, so-called First Amendment auditors? What's going down?
We get it from everything. The other thing that happened was, they made a change in the law. So if we arrested somebody, and the defense counsel was requesting documents, they had to wait for discovery. Now they don't have to. So they're hitting us with a FOIA request, so we're getting this right up front. It's traffic accident reports, it's, it's everything. And it's, what, what's really, I think, has driven some of it too, is the cameras, right? We have the body worn cameras, so now everyone wants to see the video and the software we had to purchase to redact, blur out faces that aren't involved, it was pretty expensive, but we had to. And I think now that people, they just want everything, they want to see everything, we even have people that, that are contacting us, hey, back in 1985, my father was involved in, et cetera, et cetera, can I get a copy of that report? So we've got to get out in the basement and dig through boxes and see what we can find, and then manually redact it. I wish I had a good, solid answer for you, but it just seems to be trending up.
Well, as a follow-up to that, do you find, has it become a burden on the staff's time? Is there anything that the council could do in terms of funding that would help that? Or is this just more of allocating resources? I mean, how is this impacting your day-to-day sort of, I mean, staff handling this?
We're doing okay right now. I can't tell you that in another year or two that I don't come back to you and say, we're going to need somebody probably dedicated to doing that function. But right now, we're doing good.
Okay. And I will, of course, second and third, any future headcount increases, though, that's certainly, it's asked for by the public, though. I, I mean, anybody who goes, you know, drives through one at certain times of the day, and gets buzzed by someone who's, you know, crossed their fingers that there isn't a patrol officer there, you know, it's, I, I hate it, and I, I, the day, the day when I know there will be a police officer there, there, and there, and someone's going to get nailed, I will appreciate that on behalf of myself and the residents. So, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we do have code enforcement, and that is with Director Toomey, and that is page 91 of your budget book.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm David Toomey, I'm Director of Code Enforcement, and that is my staff. And I have the pleasure and the privilege to work with them every day. Our department is a very small department, we have five people plus one part-time electrical This year, we issued a total of 1,807 permits, including electrical, plumbing, seasonal rentals. This is slightly down from last year, but last year was a record year. Of those, 605 were building permits, last year was 699. I remember the days, if we hit 500, we were thinking we had a very busy year. Now 600 seems to be the norm. Last year, we did about 2,400 inspections, this year 2,528. So even though we had less permits, we had more inspections, because some of the bigger projects take more inspections than some of the small projects. So you can't go by just permits about how busy we are. In total, we did, we took in $118 million. And of that, 76.9 million was commercial, and 41.5 was residential. And of residential, basically, we had 51 homes, last year we had 67, but we're in the same range as normal. Next year, it might be back to 67, but it's not peaking high or low, it's just kind of even. And of the bigger projects for commercial, we had six projects this year. At 416 Bucksin Road, we had a warehouse addition. At 933 Portland Road, we had a Roma Joe's go in. At 11 East View Parkway, had a tradesman unit. At 40 Bucksin Road, the middle school renovation. 68 Front Street was wastewater renovations down there, which takes time, even though we don't get any fees for it. And then at 438 Thornton Academy Facility for Athletics. So, we had some good projects. And my numbers are from February to February, because I can't guesstimate what's going to be by July. So next year, I will have another one on here, which I can tell you, I just received a permit for a $12 million building out on Route 1. It's going in the right direction. We had 198 complaints, which doesn't include the ones that is a phone call, and we direct them to some other agency or to some other department, but it's about steady, because we had a little over that last year, but not much. And we reviewed 626 plans. And again, our staff is 5.5 people. Our accomplishments for this year, we maintained a very high level of service throughout the department while the construction activities continued to remain elevated. We sought out additional trainings and information in preparation for complicated and new adopted building and energy codes, which took effect today. We met all the expanded demands of required construction plan review and inspection for both residential and commercial projects. We continually lead the region in requiring fire stopping inspections for all new commercial and multi-use constructions. And we maintain leadership roles on both the Maine and New England Executive Boards, and continue to be a resource to other communities by aiding and consulting, assisting in collaboration, and furthering education of our peers. We get many calls from other communities asking questions, and from other contractors who are working in other communities and asking us about the codes. So we are a good resource all around. Our goals for 2026 is to continue to expand the interdepartment communications and partnerships within the city. Our department works with every department in the city, quite a few of them on a regular basis. We'll meet the expectations of succession planning for future evolutions of the department. At some point, I will not be here. It's, I'm closer to the end than the beginning. Further promote the use of our online portal for all necessary and required permitting and relative related activities, while also working towards accepting electronic payments. That's one thing that we were asked a lot now, so we've got to work towards that. We get more and more people who are doing our online portal, but they're looking for some way to pay. And we want to research how to best restart the MDU life safety inspections, combining with marijuana inspections, business license renewal inspections, fire sprinkler, and seasonal rental inspections. We do the seasonal rentals, but we want to try to put it all as one new person eventually in the future. This is my expenses, basically 95% of it is salaries I have no control over. And our operating went up 3%, which is a total of $738. It's a small department. Our revenues last year was $1.2 million. We're estimated to pull in $748,000 this year. I think we'll meet that. It slowed down a little bit around Christmas through February because of cold and snow, but the number of permits that are coming in this month is, it's going to be a busy spring. So, changes basically are because of COLAR, and then just increased costs for operating, that's why it went up 3% there. And that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you, Director Toomey. Any questions or comments? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Not a question, but a comment. Delighted to hear that we're seeing a little bit of a shift to commercial.
Yes.
That'll benefit our tax base significantly.
Yes.
I was, I was actually impressed, I went over to the CZA public hearing at the Public Works Department last week, and I, I saw the pods building, which is fairly significant.
Yep.
And I, I didn't hear that mentioned in your list, so...
That was last year's list.
That was last year's, okay. So that's already in the mix.
Yeah, the bigger projects take more than one year to build, so...
They sure do. Yeah, that's a beauty. So we, we need more of that, as you know, and we all know. So I'm kind of glad to hear that the workload is, is, is increasing in that area. But I also, it's a two-edged sword, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we have to, I think, as a council, recognize that it is a, you know, a two-edged sword, and, and what we want has implications in terms of staffing. And so I think that, I'm sure City Administrator Bohanko will have that on his, his list of things to keep an eye on as we move forward. But I, I do think that that, that is a, a good indicator. When they invent human cloning, you probably want to apply it to your department, because I hear good things about some folks in my, my ward, anyway, indicating the interactions, the communication has been, has been pretty strong. So, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? Good. Thank you, Director Toomey.
Have a good night.
You too, as well. Okay, next on the list this evening, we do have the Facilities Department, and that is with Director Roth, and page 101 of your budget book.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city councilors, City Administrator Bohanko. I want to thank you first of all for letting me come up and talk about the Facilities Department, and talk about our budget a little bit. I have an amazing staff with a ton of experience and a lot of dedication to this. Just a quick, if you remember, I guess, this department wasn't here last year, so therefore, my budget is not higher than last year, just so you know, okay? We started talking about this back in April or May of last year, it got a little more serious through the summer. Finally, in September, we kind of merged together. I brought on a deputy director in October, Andrew Saxa, who's done an amazing job working with me through the financial part as well as the hands-on part. We have approximately a little over 25 buildings, if you add everything together, that we work with on a daily basis. We have seasonals as well in there, we have the schools. So every day is a little bit different, keeps us on the ball a little bit, and keeps us going. So, if you want to take a look at this first sheet, my organizational chart, this is the, this is the municipal part of facilities. This is the director, our master electrician, deputy director Andrew... Director Andrew, and then I have two maintenance techs and two full-time custodians. Excuse me. We clean, our custodians do basically, little different every day. We maintain and clean four to five buildings every single day, no matter what. We have certain days that we do other buildings. Our maintenance staff is pretty much, comes in in the morning. We discuss what we're doing, what's on fire, what's leaking water, what's dripping, what's doing, and that's what we do. We also do maintenance in between there as well. So this chart right here is basically what you see on the municipal side. If you take a look at this next one, this is when we combine the two together. Now, mind you, the school staff is not included in the municipal part of the budget. The way we've set this up right now, we're getting some finalizing with John and Jeremy, actually, on this. The schools are covering 60% of the Director and Deputy Director's position. The custodians, their maintenance staff, all stayed within the school budget still. They stay that way. They work through us. We help them. We, they basically gained Andrew and myself as a Director instead, and they didn't hire a Director. It's working out, I think, really well. And I've had other communities reaching out to me to ask how we're doing it or why we're doing it. Saco has a pretty unique way, I guess, to explain it that makes it a little bit easier. If we were at a conference recently, if you think about it, as far as maintenance and capital and everything else, we don't take care of Thornton Academy, so we don't have to worry about the high school. We have a Parks and Rec Department that works very close with us, but they also take care of all the mowing, all of the field maintenance, all of the lining of the fields, all of that kind of stuff. We have a Public Works Department that takes care of the majority of the snow plowing for the sidewalks, the streets. We work with all of them, but we have those staffs that are there already. And we do work really close with everybody, so it's kind of a nice group altogether. This is our budget overview. Again, new this year. If you take a look at this, the bottom part of this is actually not just facilities, but it's also City Hall, where City Hall does not have a separate group. It was always in facilities. When I was just the Facilities Manager, we always handled this. I worked with Judy and Jenna on this, and what we did was, we took the utilities and everything else and brought it into the facilities. One of the reasons for this is, it allows me to see those invoices and keep on track of everything. So part of facilities is also watching our spending. I'm trying, I work real close with the Energy Committee. We do a lot of stuff as far as our purchasing, our LED accounts, heating oil, heat, and part of us doing that maintenance is a big part that, we do all of this together. And so that was all put into this budget instead. So budget changes, as you can see, we've already discussed. It was established this year. Our total budget, $546,748. Our costs were reallocated, some from Public Works, and brought some of the regular utilities into our budget. We do have one new full-time person that we hired. When we branched out, we brought on a second custodian, so that we could keep our two maintenance people that were already here on staff just doing maintenance. And that's what we're really trying to do. We're trying to keep our custodians and our maintenance separate, so that I have time to do those PM's work and things like that, that we haven't had time to do in the past. So it's important to try to maintain our equipment, because it's something that's been let go for a long time in the city. And it wasn't anybody's fault, and I'm not pointing fingers, it's just, we just didn't have that kind of staff. So look at some of our accomplishments this year. Some of them are kind of out there, some of them are kind of quiet. The City Hall clock tower, I know it still looks like the same clock tower, however, it's got a lot of new wood, it's got a lot of repairs, it's got a lot of fiberglass, it's got a lot of paint. So instead of waiting until, like, our partners over there, and it fell off the top of City Hall, we work really well with a gentleman out of Vermont, who comes down and takes care of this building like it's his. We worked with his staff. If you saw it out there, we had about an 80-foot lift out there that was working on this thing for a couple of weeks. We originally had allocated about $110,000 to $120,000 to do what we did. We did it for about 65. So some of it came with us running for parts, some of us did some of the work as well on it. As Ryan talked about, planning and executing the installation of the new splash pad. This has been a group, team, city, you name it, effort. We've got the rotary, we've got an electrical company, we've got a local contractor, we've got a person who's doing the excavation, and everybody's come together. And two weeks ago, when we said, "Look, Memorial Day's coming, we've got to get this thing going," we had all of these groups all together, all talking about it, with Ryan as well, getting this thing moving, which it is right now. We're moving forward pretty quick on it. So it will be open this spring for sure, which is kind of exciting. As Jack had talked about earlier, we did the downstairs of his old firing range, which seems like you're just cleaning up and putting in new stuff. It doesn't work that way. We had a lot of lead down there. We needed to do lead abatement. My guys jumped in. We had one quote come in just for the lead abatement at almost $80,000, and we did pretty much the entire project for around $80,000, between helping the company. And we got lucky on some of the product that had to be hauled away, didn't have to. So that is pretty much done, and working really great. We've got a new control system here at City Hall. Again, won't show to many of you, but we actually can log on a computer. We can see what we're doing. We're about to do another phase of that coming up pretty soon. It allows us to see if everything's working all right, try to keep it as efficient as we can. Again, Ryan talked about the teen room. That wasn't there a year ago. We did that all in-house. Between one private, small contractor and our own people, we turned that one bay oversized garage into the teen room instead, and got it all done with a new entryway and everything else on it. We're just finishing up a new maintenance bay over at Parks and Rec, that'll allow them to put their wood truck in there, as well as all their equipment, to keep it out in the wintertime. They just poured the floor last week. We ran the electrical, started the electrical yesterday, so that will be, they'll be parking in there within the week, pretty much, with everything. Bringing the schools into this. So I jumped in in September, and there was approximately, probably, six to eight jobs, which doesn't sound like a lot. One of them was $2 million, another one was $150,000. There was a 400-kilowatt generator that was already purchased, but wasn't sitting anywhere and needed to be found. There was another building that was supposed to be built for the Facilities Department. That building for the Facilities Department, when we looked at the plans, it didn't really fit what I would hope to have. So we went ahead and kind of talked to Jeremy about that on the building, to see what we could do. And we are doing a different building instead, which, using our contractors within the city, saved us about $75,000 by doing it that way, and actually got me what I want, which is going to help us to be able to do maintenance on our equipment, storage. Inventory is a big deal. So all of the schools, as well as some of our buildings, needed exterior illumination, a little bit updated. So we did a bunch of new LEDs everywhere, including the schools. Burn School had a power surge at one time in the last year, and there was not one outside light working on the entire building. Middle School was the same way. So we've got everything replaced. Again, with merging us together, we had a full-time Master Electrician, so we didn't need to go outside. So this program, this department, was sold as not a money savings, but I really think, within the year, you're going to see it's going to be a money savings. I don't think it's going to be hard to show what we've done and can do. Public Works, one of our biggest issues when we took over with the School Department was snow removal. Their custodians do a lot of the close, hands-on stuff. They didn't have anybody on staff to do some of the other removal. I worked with Jeremy right off the bat. We purchased another new pickup truck with a plow and sander on it. We worked every storm, my guys, as well as Andrew and myself, if we needed to. But our big goal was to not have the principals out shoveling snow every snowstorm. And I wasn't here for the last school board meeting, but it looks like it worked, because we had most of them standing up here saying that it was a, it had been a good thing for them. So I think we got it down now pretty well. We work really well with the custodians and everybody else, and I think we've got it down, so it's working. It's a good program. Here's some facilities in action, and I put this up, and I'll run through it really quick. Again, we're kind of, I called Andrew about a week ago, and I said, "Hey, can you get a picture of the Facilities Group?" Because we have, like, no pictures at all, like other people have. It's usually because we're here before, and we're here after. But we're never here when everything's going on. So we got our City Hall meetings, which, again, to most of the outside, don't think about it. Every City Council meeting, every HPC meeting, every traffic safety meeting, all of those, this room needs to be set up a different way a lot of times. A lot of times, people bring in food, they bring in other items, and it needs to be reset up the next morning, because we have meetings in here. So this building, as well as some of our others, National Night Out, we spend a days before getting ready for National Night Out to get everything there. So that's the Facilities Department that takes care of that. Our Bayview Beach area, again, we're getting close. We open those bathrooms up in the spring, we shut them down in the fall. We remove all the fixtures off the wall, so nothing freezes up anymore like it used to. We maintain the buildings. This time of year, we're starting to get them ready. We also do the ADA beach mat that our seniors program got purchased through, with Parks and Rec. We put those out every year and pull them back every year. I can tell you right now that those mats do not lay flat all summer. You get a high tide, and the mats disappear, and you'll see my guys down there shoveling them out, getting them out to keep them rolling for the entire season. So voting is, it's a love-hate relationship. I know we need to do it. It's a great thing. We work probably two days before, a day after. The one advantage we have is, working back originally with Pat Fox, we purchased a trailer that we can keep everything in, so we keep everything self-contained in there, keep it dry. We've cleaned out a lot of our areas. We probably, on average, since we moved to Thornton Academy and stopped doing the rec, we probably save anywhere between 25 and 30 hours of overtime for every single one of them now, because it's gotten that much quicker and that much easier. Our Transportation Center, again, one of those kind of unsung places that people don't think about. Snow removal, first train's at 5:35 every morning, last one's at 12:55. If we're not there to clear when the trains come in, Pan Am, Amtrak, somebody's going to be calling us and saying, "Why were you shirking your job?" So we have to be there. So my guys on, pretty much, all winter long, have to be there when a train comes. So we try to be there at least a half hour to an hour before. We try to be on the platform when the train shows up, so that the conductors see us there as well in our yellow. We do the trainings at Public Works. They actually come down and use our building and do the trainings with us, so we do the snow training every year. We also maintain that building. It has a lot of breakages. It just is. But we work really close with B-SUB on that. Larry's great, comes, calls us, lets us know. He's a pair of eyes all day long when we're over there. So I think that's a good relationship as well with them. Our Camp Ellis Pier, it's another summertime project, but it's a big project. We put, Public Works puts the docks in, then we have to put water lines out for all of the charter boats, all of the other boats to hook up and wash and rinse and everything else. We have to get our bathrooms open and closed every single year, painted inside, painted outside. We work real close with the Harbor Master to make sure that we've got everything all set. If something breaks on the dock, if Public Works isn't there right away, we're there. John Wentworth from Public Works helps with the cranes and everything down there, which are a regular breakage. We assist if we need to. So it's a huge, it's a lot of work in the summertime. It adds, if you've ever had coffee down on the pier down there on a nice morning, it's not a bad place to be for that first call, if you happen to be around. So key card access, that is maintained by Facilities Department. That is, pretty much, lives on this computer. We set the doors for every meeting in here, every meeting at Public Works, any of the buildings that are key access. I also maintain all the key cards and all the punch-in numbers that we have, the codes. So our fire department, obviously, to put on your turnout gear and try to get into the building does not work. So we've done actual access readers over there, so they have a four-digit or a five-digit code to get in. We've done those as well at North Saco and at Camp Ellis. So if a volunteer fireman is responding to a fire, and he doesn't have his badge on him, he can get into the building to get moving. All of that stuff is done through us. That's also the gates as well. We have security gates over at PD. We have security gates up at Public Works. During a snowstorm, we maintain those. We take care of opening them, closing them, whatever we need to do to keep that moving, and maintenance as well on it. Just a kind of cool slide I wanted to throw up there for everybody. If you've never been up in the clock tower and looking out, that's what it looks like, looking through the hands of the clock on the right-hand side, right there. Anybody that thinks that the clock is all automated and good, take a look at those four nice little circles in the middle with all the gears on it. That is the four different faces on the clock going to each direction with that main drive gear underneath. And there is about a 35-foot rod that goes to that, off of 13 other couplers that go all the way down to the next tier that, I know Nathan's been up there and seen what that looks like before, back in the day. So it's still the same way. It hasn't changed a whole lot. So it's just kind of a neat thing to see. Emergency planning, I am part of EMA to make sure we're all set. Saco's doing a real great job right now. We're doing a lot with our generators. We've got 10 generators between these that are up here, these six, and I've got four more. The schools, we just put in a new 400 KW generator up at the middle school generator, which will run that whole school. Just in case you didn't know, again, that school, without electricity, you can't flush a toilet, you can't run a faucet. It has water pumps that keeps it running. So you get a power outage during the day, the school has to be canceled and go down. Our Bus Transportation Building as well, they need something up there. That generator's been in their budget for two years now, had $20,000 sitting in there. We put it in with the assistance of Public Works, digging the trench and our electrician doing it. It was about 14.6, 14.7 to do it. So again, our municipal working together with the School Department saves money in the long run, one way or the other. All of these generators, we maintain. We have a contract with an outside source that does the electrical part of it. They come and inspect it. If we find that one of them needs some mechanical work to the engine or so much, usually, we'll do it through our Public Works mechanics, and they'll go out and do it. For instance, we had a repair at the North Saco. It was around $3,900, and it was about $460 in parts to do it, and to send one of them up for about an hour and do it. So we do try to keep it in-house as much as we can on a lot of that stuff. We're also trying to get all of our generators, so they're on, basically, on an internet hookup, or that we get, we get readings on them monthly or weekly. Most of them are weekly. So we know that they run every single week at a certain time for 10 to 15 minutes, so they're cycling. It also allows us, in case of a storm, chief sends out something about a storm coming in, I can look at the records and see what it is. So we've got a few more still to get on there, and we'll be able to monitor all those a little bit closer, without having to drive around to 10 different buildings to make sure that was running recently. And some goals and projects for this year. So City Hall is also a, it's always a repair. We've always got stuff to do here. We've got a bunch of painting lined up already for mostly exterior, for windows and doors and things this year. The schools have a bunch of life safety issues that we're taking care of. We're trying to get everything up to snuff on those this year, and get everything back to where it needs to be, so that it's proper. Again, it's hard to describe. We've got a new school being built, but we've got three more years that we still need to maintain these buildings and keep them safe for our kids to be in. So we don't want anything not working properly. We have purchased a new maintenance program called MaintainX. Andrew's been working really hard with it, getting all of our assets in and everything else. This will allow us way, be able to track everything way better. Gives us the ability to PM. It gives us the ability to maintain an inventory. It gives us the ability to put a QR code on every one of our pieces of equipment, walk up to it with our phone, take a picture of it, pulls up all the history on it, lets us know what we've done to it. What that does as well for our capital plan is allows us, if we've got an old air handle that's due for replacement, but we've put every new part in it in the last three years, we can probably get another four to five years out of it, because we've already... we can probably get another four to five years out of it, because we've already changed all the important parts. So it's not necessarily just because it says it's due for replacement, but we're actually monitoring to see what it is. The HVAC updates, again, we're changing some of our equipment around so that we can monitor it a little bit better and keep up with it. The construction of the new facilities building at middle school, I talked about that, that will be, should be breaking ground sometime in late spring. Hopefully before September, we'll have that building up. It's a 30-by-60 building with a mezzanine area, so that we will have the second floor for inventory, which, in another slide or two, you'll see why that inventory is kind of important. Parks and Rec, we're doing a big roof job on it this year. The south side of it, which is the employee side, has some, it's, it's been needing to be done, and we've had a couple of issues where it's opened up, so we've gotta take care of that this year. I've already got that all lined up for the springtime. Heating systems for the schools, again, three more years on these buildings, we can't just let them go. We've gotta have heat in the wintertime, we've gotta have them working, and there's no sense in having them not working correctly. We've been over at Burn School doing a lot of, Andrew has actually got a lot of experience with steam heat, which are airlines which run through that old building from 1922 on the main part of it. We've learned through issues in the building, that is a 1922 building, a 1954 building, and a 2000 building. So we've, we've been through all of it. So some of the heating issues we're trying to take care of, we've transferred our main boiler to the natural gas boiler instead of the oil boiler, because it's way more efficient and doesn't cost half as much as oil does on the other side. Our in-house med education, we are attempting right now, while we are doing it, Andrew and myself will be going to do, it's a facilities masters kinda program. It's two different, two different groups. There's seven classes in each group, we're gonna both jump in and do that. My guys will be doing some more in-house and online training for our heat pump cleaning, heat pump maintenance, because it's a huge part of our infrastructure around the city right now. Here's one of the reasons for the inventory. So this is our new building that we're working with the school on. That is the newest picture of the pre-K and the primary building. The smaller building is a 60,000 square foot building, the larger building is 160,000 square foot building. There's 200-plus toilets between the two buildings, there's 220 sinks between the two buildings, there's that many water fountains between most of the buildings. We're gonna need parts on hand, because kids are not gentle on equipment, and it will break. So we are working as close as we can with being involved in the planning and preparation and construction of the new building. We're trying to start working on our team a little bit, and making sure that when that building opens, we're ready to go, because this is a lot more newer than what we've been dealing with before. Especially training in the heating and cooling, this is a geothermal system, it's pretty in-depth, it's pretty, it's pretty big. So we'll be, we'll be working hard with that one. So there it is, there's the team right there. It's a really good group who's very dedicated, they've, they work really hard every day, and they do a lot of stuff that other people would have no idea that they wanna do, but we do it anyway. So that's it. Can you answer any questions for anybody?
Great, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Donnie, thank you for that vila, this old house-inspired presentation. We've got some old buildings, but you're doing a great job, so we appreciate that. I, I am the liaison to the Energy and Sustainability Committee, have been since I've been on the council. It's one of my favorite liaison responsibilities. And I had an epiphany at the April meeting, we meet the first Tuesday of the month, and I had a very sort of proud council epiphany, when I witnessed the interaction between multiple departments on working together to resolve a number of the issues that Don brought up in his presentation. So for me, this whole move, and it was a, you know, for City Administrator Behenko, it was a step out of the box that I really appreciate you doing. I, I have no doubt that this is going to save the city of Saco lots of money moving forward that we won't even realize. So I, I wanna recommend, mention that to the public. And this, if you, if you ever think that our city departments don't work together, come to an Energy and Sustainability Committee meeting on the first Tuesday of the month. We've actually had some, some citizens attend, it's been kind of interesting. Your opinion would be changed rather quickly, so I, I just wanted to be able to say that publicly, and you're doing a great job, so keep it up.
Thank you.
Great, anyone else? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, no questions, I guess, just to say, I think the transition has really gone well, and I hear only positive things. And I know it's, it's a huge job to start a new department, become a director, take over new responsibilities, pick up projects in the middle, pick up deferred maintenance that you had no job in creating, but now you gotta fix. And it, just everything I hear is that it's gone incredibly well, incredibly smooth, everybody is pleased, it's just really been seamless, and it's a, it's a, it's a huge job.
Good to hear, thank you.
Yeah, just thank you, and I think it's gone really well.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, no, likewise, I've got nothing but praise. I've, you know, again, as a former long-term member of the Energy and Sustainability Committee, I, I also always appreciate to see how staff problem-solve together in these areas. Also, as someone that manages, maintains five to seven properties myself, I certainly can recognize what goes on. In fact, I can't walk around my properties without wanting to tear my hair out, because there's so many things to do and just not enough of me. So knowing that you all do it with seven people and dozens of properties, and for as long as I can, well, I shouldn't say for as long as I can remember, for most of my adult life, anyway, you step into any city property, and they're spotless. We take it for granted. You come into this room, the carpet's always vacuumed, right? I mean, I've, I've never seen a mess. I look at those curtains, and I, again, I look at things and go, oh, the maintenance, everything's maintenance with me. So I look at those curtains, and it's like, oh, the dust, those must collect, and how, how many man-hours are involved in just keeping, you know, something as small as this room maintained? It's, it's an endless job. And again, I just, it's a plug for the overall foresight to recognize that, like, facilities maintenance is important, most people don't recognize it, things just happen. And I mean, I, it's not that long ago, like, remember, and some of you may remember this too, I'm always good for a story. I just, I recall, I think I was in first or second grade, when my, it had city council, they were talking about the clock tower, and it had been derelict, and council didn't wanna fund it. So my, my father at the time as mayor challenged the first and second grade to raise funds, and then council would match it. So as a second grader, I remember collecting pennies and change, I think it was $20,000 in our contribution, the city would match it. And it was successful, but you think back and it's like, well, that's kind of embarrassing, you're asking a bunch of kids, you know, to do basic maintenance of, of buildings. It's totally, you know, different time and era, I guess, but the overall point is preventive maintenance is so important, so you don't end up in those instances. You know, this is another example, I can show all of you photographs of what this room used to look like, I used to play up here. Looking at those photographs, I'm kinda actually questioning, oh, my father let me play up there with the junk and, you know, the ceiling caving in. You know, but we have this gem today, and it's, it's because we've consistently maintained them. And again, not to pick on our neighbors across the river, but I think we've all watched, I recall that clock tower, I think it was $40,000 in 1995, that they, they argued over, and it ended up being well over $200,000, if not more at this point. I think it was 1.4 million for all of city hall, but the clock tower was a substantial amount. So I just plug in all the work that you do and, and your staff, and it's, it's certainly going to, I agree with Counselor Hatch, that, you know, money's one thing, and it's good to save, but I also look at the efficiencies and the services. I mean, my son's a student at Burn School, and I've heard the horrors, and, you know, previously at Fairfield, just, you know, one room's super hot, we're talking like 90 degrees, the other room's freezing. And that's an old building, but, you know, there was never-
We're still working on that, but we're getting there.
But, but now we have a point of contact to actually maintain it, where before it was like, how do we deal with this? You got teachers opening windows, I, I used to sit there in the parking lot and be like, okay, there's $20,000 just blowing out the window, because you, they can't figure it out. So I just, it's been the step in the right direction, is my overall point. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
On my end, too, just to give a thank you, the, the capital line, the capital plan that we use in the budget part is very important to us. It allows me to kinda do those things that break along the way without having to come to you every time I need $4,000, $5,000. So between working with, with Travis and Jen on that, and the money that stays there, I met with the school department today and said, this is what you guys need to do. I need, I need some capital to work with every day, so I'm not worried about fixing something, because we don't have the money for it. So it is, it is a very important part of the budget, for sure.
Do you have something, Counsel here?
Just a quick, Don, you and I were speaking one time when you first took over the schools, and you told us the number of work orders you were able to close out for them, it was a pretty big number. Would you share that with Counsel?
We were, when we first took over on School Dude, which is their work order program, we had almost 11,000 work orders that were on it. Now, some of these were preventative maintenance that just kept rolling and rolling and rolling and rolling. We're down to, where'd he go at? What are we, 115 right now. So probably five of those were today, because they were rolling in this afternoon at the end of the day, pretty quick. So we try to adjust, those, those are pretty much on the ball every day now. The new MaintainX program that we've got, that will go live within the city, it is for us right now, what I'm hoping is eventually we'll get the schools as well on that, and do away with the School Dude. It's an old program that doesn't do a whole lot. The MaintainX will allow us to see everything, which is really nice.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? And I do know firsthand from the school board meeting last week that the principals were very happy they did not have to shovel.
Thanks.
They were nothing but praise for both of you and your entire staff. The response time, the general maintenance, like you said, it's hard. There, you know, you're able to do a little more than a Band-Aid fix, even though we are anticipating the new school. They said, it used to be a Band-Aid, but now it's more.
Needs to be right.
Correct. And so, yeah, all of the principals, all of the staff at all the schools are very happy and appreciative as well.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Okay, and up next, we have economic development, and that is with Director Disjardins, and page 190 of your budget book.
Let's hope this works. There you go. Good evening. My name is Tracy Disjardins, I'm the Director of Economic Development. Thank you for having me speak this evening on behalf of the Economic Development Department. Our department is two, and we get a lot accomplished. So under the Economic Development in Action, under the TIF dollars generated for this past year, we're talking about $7.7, $7.5 million that have come in under TIF revenues. Under, for capital projects that were funded through TIF funds, $1.986 million. For ribbon cuttings, we did seven, but I want folks to know that there's more businesses that open, but not everybody takes part as far as in having a ribbon cuttings, but we try to reach out to everybody and how we can kinda market and, and let them know that they've opened up a business. For new businesses, and again, this is working with the city clerk's office, they've had 27 new businesses that have registered, as far as for this past year. And again, we've been working with the clerk's office in trying to emphasize the importance that when you open up a business in Saco, that you must register, but some of those do slip through the crack as well. For our revolving loan, our revolving loan program is administered through the Southern Maine Finance Agency, and there are currently 23 active city RLF loans, and over $460,000 has been distributed out. And for these 23 active loans, everyone is making payments, which is good to hear. For our grant awards programs, we have done eight facade grants for $73,106, and for the total investment from the businesses has been $162,110. Five small business grants for a total of $60,951, and we're looking at a total investment from those businesses at $359,000. We still have more grants coming in, so this is, we haven't even got through the end of the year, and we still are getting more requests for grant funds. Under our accomplishments for TIF revenues, the biggest thing to remember for TIF revenues is the idea of how we can maximize and get the most for those TIF revenues through capital projects. For our grants and revolving loan programs, we've also had, did a community development block grant for $100,000. This was for Tambac, for them to expand their company, and they, with that, they are buying machines, a new machine, and offering 20 new jobs for folks. For our facade grant program, this is for downtown businesses, and we've extended that program into Camp Ellis. So again, the businesses down at Camp Ellis are able to take advantage of that program. Our Brownfields program, we've done the completion of the industrial park property that the, was basically given to the city. I am now waiting for the final report on that, what needs to be done as far as any type of cleanup, and then we're coming back to council on how do we wanna redevelop this property. The next one we have in the queue is 509 Buxton, and right now, that's currently gonna be going under a phase two. I'm waiting to get a, a list as far as the schedule that I will get out to counselors, so if somebody calls you to say that what's going on out there, then you'll be able to answer that it is under the Brownfields program, and we are doing some environmental studies. We've also have sent out letters to other potential site owners for, to get them into the queue of the program. We've waited a little bit on this because we wasn't sure what was happening at the federal level regarding federal grants, and I just didn't wanna get stuck with if we weren't able to move forward, but we have gotten assurance through EPA that we can go ahead and, and move forward with this program. Last week, we had a session with the Chamber, Bitterford Main Street and Saco Main Street, as well as the Southern Maine Finance Authority and the Small Business Administration. We did it at the train station, and it was really to get our programs out there. So it was attended by some bankers, and as well as a few of the small businesses. The idea of it was where to find money and where to find funds. So now when bankers are meeting with potential business owners, they can say, look, Scott, Saco has these types of programs. So Tori and I will be doing some follow-up, some of the bankers wanna meet with us and go over and more in-depth with our program. Our small business grant program and the facade grant program is administered through, Tori is the administrator on that, as our business specialist, and does an outstanding job with that program. For the revolving loan, one of the things we wanna be able to do there is hoping to continue to get the word out that we do have this program, where businesses can basically have up to $100,000 as far as to, to help with their business. This is definitely a, a good asset. We had changed that from originally $10,000 to $100,000. Under marketing and communications, we wouldn't be anywhere really without our communications department. We can rely on them to getting the word out. If I have stuff that comes across my desk with SBA for Southern Maine Planning and Development, if they have any programs, I just send that over to communications, and they, they fan the word out. We also have the Business Buzz, which is, I try to get an article to, to that department for once a month, again, promoting. They're there for our ribbon cuttings, they're there to promote businesses throughout the city, and again, a department working well with us, and they do an outstanding job. For our wayfinding signs, we are getting close. This is a project that I took on when I came on board to try to see it through, and if all goes well, we'd be looking at probably sometime in May, I hope, for the installation of these signs, which would be great. The Saco Island multimodal bridge project, we had a kickoff meeting on this, so this, again, is moving forward, and this is for the PDR, which is the- And this is for the PDR, which is the preliminary design and final design. So hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll have a product that is approved by both cities. This is a project I'm co-lishing with Biddeford. And we'd be able to move forward and hopefully see this project in the future come through. Another program that we worked with, which again, I'm really proud of, and that was making the connection with our new Mainers. We have companies that need employees, and we have employees that need jobs. So I met with, Tori and I did, we met with the liaisons with the Catholic Charities of Maine from the Ramada who came and sat with us. And with that, it was what are your needs, what are your folks needing as far as, some of it is more education, some of it is just having a little bit of confidence on knowing where to go for jobs. With that, I was able to connect the liaisons with some of our companies, especially in the industrial park, because they can walk there, and they've been able to hire people. So I hope to continue that relationship. The Arts Commission. The Arts Commission continues to do the electrical box wraps. And again, they're looking for some future goals of doing even more artwork as far as throughout the city. And I know, Councilman Hewitt, you sit on that commission. The Harbor Fest, we are going into our third annual Harbor Fest this year. You can mark your calendars. It's going to be August 2nd and 3rd. We hope for weather to cooperate. And again, everybody is excited. The committee has done an outstanding job and moving forward with the planning of that. Our goals in looking for FY '26, the Portland Road Master Plan. This is a group effort with multiple to different departments, working with the planning board. We did have our first kind of business breakfast last week. Goes by so fast. And it was well-attended, and it really was, it was a great, it was a great day as far as some of the business came in. Emily and I will be working together and doing more outreach and holding a little, a few more forms on this. But this is just to get the conversation started on what we're looking at for the Route One Master Plan. Knowing this isn't going to happen overnight, this is going to be time in doing it, but really connecting with the folks that not only live out there, but also have a business out there. The Citywide Housing Plan, this is another project we need to be working on. This is working with, again, with the planning department, looking at our housing stock. We have a consultant that's working with us. She also attended the Portland Road Master Plan as well. And again, we'll be doing some kickoff and some meetings on that coming up. Continue to work on our city grant programs. I'd like to expand our grant programs into, as again, we look at the housing stock, especially in our downtown, and what types of programs we can work on to offer some relief as far as to convert the upstairs levels in the downtown into residential. And of course, the Saco Island Multimodal Bridge Project. This is just the beginning of that. We'll probably be looking for, you know, the year, like I said, before I have a plan to come back to you, it'll probably be more like December, January, before I'll have something to bring back. But we will be engaged in public, and we will do the progress as far as through our social media and through our website, so people can see what's going on. For our Economic Development Commission goals, they really want to take a hard look at our downtown parkin'. This is something that they have had on their mind to do because, again, if we're looking to extend our housing stock in the downtown, parkin' is going to be something that is going to come up that we've got to look at. The TIF Guidelines and TIF applications, from what I've seen, we haven't done anything within the TIF, but I want to make sure that everything is in place in regards of that. We have the guidelines, however, there isn't really an application that kind of goes along with that. And I think that that's important, to have an application to go along with the guidelines. So I will work with the EDC, and they'll take a good look at that and see if we need to make any amendments and that, and then it will come back to council for approval. Again, with the Brownfields program, we have until '27 to spend these funds. So our goal now is to really educate, get the word out, to say we have this funding and we want to spend it. Hopefully, the idea down the road, we'll be able to get some more funding to continue to do that work. And with the city grant programs, extending that, and again, continue to offer these programs. We've had businesses that have done very well. Finest Kind was able to secure a facade grant. They were able to secure a small business grant. They did the 504 through Southern Maine Finance Authority, and they also did our revolving loan. So that was a business that had benefited from four different programs that we offer. For the Arts Commission, they are setting some goals to do more arts installations. They're looking at murals, including the Pepper Square billboard. We have this billboard that sits on top of a roof that really has no place. They've been working very hard and diligently with the property owners, as well as they have hired a grant writer to help them as far as looking and seek funding for some art installation work. They want to do some installation of indoor art, as well as in city and public buildings, installation of 3D art pieces, and create a policy for art installation in the historic district. Right now, currently working with the Historic Preservation, which again, with the planning department and our department working together in developing a policy when it comes to installation of art. As some may know and some may not know, the Economic Development Department is funded 100% through TIF funds. Within the TIF funds, we're able to do lots of other things as well. So when you ask what a TIF is, a TIF is basically a tool for an economic development. It's used throughout the state of Maine, as well as other areas. It allows municipalities to shelter increases in the value up to 30 years and avoid losses due to state and county fiscal formulas. The TIF revenue can fund infrastructure enhancements related to, required for project development. This can be public or private or project cost. And a comprehensive development program can fund many municipal projects to enhance the economic development climate. As you can see, we spent almost $2 million of TIF funds just on capital improvement projects. This has not come from the taxpayer. This is all comes through the TIF funds, which helps offset that cost. And of course, the development program needs to meet the statutory requirements of the local process. We just can't say we're going to fund TIF monies for, just because that's what we want to do. We have to go through the statutes and through looking at the TIFs to make sure that it is in compliant and it is also part of the development plan as well before we spend those funds. Saco has done very well within their TIFs. This is actually a map of what our TIF, Saco currently has 10 TIFs. And as you can see, you have the different colorations. So if you talk to the top of the lime green area, that's Park North. And then the salmon-type color, which is in different areas, that's what we call the transit-oriented TIF district. The blue down the bottom, that's everything within the downtown TIF district. And again, you have Ready Seafood, which is up in the upper top, which is in a different darker blue. Millbrook Omnibus TIF, again, that's within the business park. Within the industrial park, there's also TIF districts. So as you can see, there's multiple ways as far as to be able to fund city projects through these TIF districts. This gives you an overview of the budget. And when you look at FY '26, when you look at the, down the bottom for the total of revenues, you've got $13 million. What you need to understand is that whatever I don't, what we don't spend that we budget for within our operational budget, goes back into those TIF funds because it has to. And by doing that, it basically accumulates. So when you look at that figure right now, with what the balance of that is, you're looking at $13 million. And that doesn't include with the end of this fiscal year, with what money funds go back into that. We're looking at an expense cost under, for FY '26 for TIFs, is $7.1 million. That's not just my department. That's including everything that TIFs are allowed to fund for the city. Gives you a little idea as far as, like the bar that goes across, again, the bottom shows you coming out to 13 million. But when you do the projections of '27, '28, '29, it doesn't have, it's just going to have a little bit of the projections beyond of what the revenues are coming in, but that doesn't include what the balance will be. So those numbers, of course, change. And same thing goes for the expenses. Within my operation budget, mind you, this is just the operating budget. This does not include other salaries that is paid for by TIF funds. This does not include capital. This does not include the other entities that are funded. B-Soup has funding through TIFs. Chamber has funding through TIF. Saco Main Street has funding through TIF. The Southern Maine Finance, SPODC, those all have funding through TIF. But that doesn't include those because some of those numbers are, their requests are a little bit higher. But we've stayed up level funding. We're basically not asking for any more funds other than what's coming out for Colas for mine and Tori's salary. And that's it.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Disjardins. A great presentation. I have a couple of things. And first, really, some compliments, the new business growth is really great. I really appreciate that number, 20-some new businesses opening, really important. And I was also really pleased to see the Arts Commission really focusing on public art installations. I think that's been
Yes.
...missing in our city. So I'm really, really pleased to see that coming up.
As Tori.
Yeah, really excited. That's really great. One general question and then two really kind of weedy questions. Can you tell me more about the city grant programs and your planned expansion? I know you talked about converting maybe some second-floor kind of office space to residential. Maybe how that's going to work, where the funding is going to come from, how we're going to pay for it, just how that, what that's going to look like, who applies, the size of it, just anything more?
One of the things that I've heard council say, and John and I have had this conversation as well, is that really, and I think it was really reaching out to Mark Johnston in the conversation that I had with Mark when he was retiring, what's stopping the businesses or the owners in the downtown from doing anything on the upper levels? And it comes down to, we now have the sprinkler, and you get those impact fees. It's very difficult if you've got to take and convert these buildings, these older buildings in the historic district alone, to meet some of that criteria. So these buildings are all in the downtown TIF district. This allows council that we can work on putting a mechanism together that can help offset some of those costs to encourage them turning those buildings into residential on the upper floors.
That's great. You think that can be supported by the downtown TIF district?
Correct.
And use of those funds? Okay, that's great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Two really weedy questions about some of the TIF budgets. I've kind of gone line by line, and I have questions about two lines, so I'm just going to ask. One is for the downtown development TIF district. This is on page 197. It involves the special revenue transfer to the general fund, I think, if I have it right. It's under, it's the change in $1,093,081. It looks like many of the TIFs have a transfer to the general fund that's decreased, if I understand it right, or a decrease, or a transfer. I'm curious about it. It's a different direction than the other transfers that look similar in the other TIF districts. And here, it looks like a change of $1,093. Is that a rebalancing of how we're transitioning money to and from the general fund? I'm just curious about how that worked. I don't know who the right person to ask is.
I'm going to ask Finance.
Thank you.
Maybe. So what that is, is we only allocated $6 million in TIF revenue for the budget purposes. So that would be money going back into the general fund to help offset an increase in taxes.
And so this is money from the TIF to the general fund, and that's increasing by a million here. And it looks like in other TIF accounts, it's decreasing. Do I have that right?
It should.
I'm sorry, I was being distracted.
No, no, no problem. So this line looks like a change in $1,093,81. But if I look at some of the other TIF districts, like Fund 2044, the Chinburg TIF district, for example, that's a change in the other direction for $118,000. You know, earlier on the page, there's a change for $69,000 in the other direction. So it looks like there's some, a little rebalancing of how we're moving funds from TIF districts and the general fund. And I'm just curious what the general strategy for that is and how we came up with these numbers.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the detail for each of these TIFs because some of the TIFs actually were down in revenue this year, so that's what that is. The money taken from the TIF accounts put into the general fund mostly all came out of the downtown TIF. So some of these other variances that you're seeing are just changes in TIF revenue in general.
Okay.
But we can absolutely get better detail.
Yeah, if we could, I'd appreciate that, at some future time, a little clarity about what's happening in that.
Yeah, I just want to mention, the one that you, if you look at the CEAs payments for the first 10 years on the mill projects, Chinburg was getting, I think it was about $80,000 a year. That payment dropped, so then your CCA's are dropping. So typically, in the 10th year, you have those dropping off. So when you see that, that was a drop-off on payments of the CZA, which is a good thing because now that money stays with the city.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. It was just, it was noticeable to me that when I went through the list, I was starting at the very beginning, the Spring Hill TIF has a decrease in the general fund transfer, the industrial park has a decrease in industrial fund transfer, the Chinburg one has a decrease, but then this one had one in the opposite direction. And I just didn't understand that strategy.
And so it's counterintuitive when you have the increase that you're going to, when we transfer that to the general fund.
Yep.
Helps offset the taxes.
I do understand that, thank you.
So, but when you see these decrease, mostly, most likely, there's CCA's that are dropping off or coming down more. So payments are now less than they were before. So for example, like I use the Chinburg mill for the first 10 years, they got a certain reimbursement. Then into the 10 to 11 to 20, it dropped down.
Yeah, thank you. And if we could just, if we could get a little summary of how all that's balancing out and what's happening.
Sure, it's a good idea.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
And you also, when you look at that, again, with the TIF revenues, and the CEAs are based upon the tax rate. So, and that changes. So this fluctuates a little bit as far as on what they're going to get in return on their CEAs.
Appreciate that. And then my second question is also really weedy, but in the transit TIF, Fund 2061 transit TIF, there's a miscellaneous expense as a first line for $212,500. And again, all the rest of the line items seem to be pretty well-described except for that one, and it's new. And I was just curious if we could learn a little more about that also, if not now, then at some time in the future. On page 198, for those trying to follow along.
We'll get an ear for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I actually am happy and appreciate the efforts that are being done to downtown smaller businesses. I think that's commendable, and I hope we keep it up. But I do want to comment on expectations here moving forward, future strategies. I am extremely hopeful that our Portland Road Master Plan will take into consideration the heavy utilization of new and existing credit enhancements, because we need a couple of big hits, okay? And those big hits, if they're properly placed, will, in my view, serve as anchor tenants or anchor businesses that will attract additional businesses, which will just perpetuate the activity on the commercial side. We've had some conversations about this. I think that we've thrown out a few ideas. It's going to, we're going to have to get really creative. It's going to require, I think, consultation, not think, it will require consultation with council to think about ways in which we can create some credit to think about ways in which we can create some credit and enhancements that we may not already have access to. But I think that the Portland Road District is really the place.
Correct.
Okay, so, but that takes another level, at least in my opinion, another level of strategy and marketing and solicitation. It's a whole different, whole different ballgame. And I hope that we see the importance of that. And second of all, I think we have resources on this council that can help. And if we can come to some consensus that these are the kinds of things, I know the mayor has shared with me some visions that she has that I fully support of uses that should occur down in that district. So I'm hopeful that moving forward, that we're going to see some of these bigger picture strategies that we can all work towards. And then lastly, on a different note, I know I've had conversations with Councilor Johnston about utilization of downtown TIF monies for maintenance and repair work in that district. So I'm going to defer to him, but I've tried to express my support that if we have money available and there are projects that, as councillor in that ward, he knows his constituents are concerned and interested in, I would certainly support any efforts to take care of those needs.
One of the, one of the things to kind of go to your first question on that within strategies, I'm always looking at strategies and that's getting out there and meeting with folks. You know, when you look at the area, what we have been focused on is that you've got the front along the Route 1 corridor. A lot of those properties are in the TIF. Your backside of those properties are not in the TIF. So when you look at what we've been working on and working with developers, it's really promoting the commercial base on the front of the corridor, trying to bring the housing more towards the back and really have a good cohesive mix of that. It was probably not too long ago when the zoning had changed, but at one point, Saco did not want any type of big business out there.
You can push that notion aside. I don't want to speak for the entire council.
But what I mean is that we've worked hard as far as in making those changes. So I have been in talks with different, in going that route and looking at what would work out there, as well as working, again, we don't own property out there, it's, you know, in working with other property owners and saying, okay, what, what can we do? This is kind of what I'm thinking. I'd like to see a grocery store out there. I think it would do very well. I'd like to see more restaurants out there. But there's all of these mixes that kind of go in there. One of the other things that I want to do as part of the strategy is that we had a marketing analysis done in 2020. So we're looking at five years on that kind of during the COVID time. But I've been in talks now and really focusing on a whole BRI program, which is a business retention and expansion. And with having something like that at our fingertips, mind you, there's two people in my department, and we don't have extra staff. There isn't an admin to kind of, so it's, our office is open. We're the first stop when somebody wants to open up a business in Saco, and Tori and I always make that a priority. So what we want to be able to do is kind of work on having a BRI-type program. So that gives us all the data collection. And again, working with, once we get some contacts within the Route 1 master plan and we kind of get feedback, what is it that people want to see out along that corridor? It's going to help us hone in. What does our industry look like now? Everything changes, and it's going to continue to change. And I see it in talks that I've had, especially now within the tariffs and stuff, that what is it going to look like down the future, in future planning out for that, with considering that the schools are going out there. So you're going to have another totally different, different use in that. But that has, you're right, that has been the strategy in kind of working towards that goal. So I'm hoping to have, you know, a program that I can get initiated, that when we're looking for data and hardcore data, and I can say, okay, let's look up, what do we have for our industry? Where is our industry? Is it all like manufacturing? Is it, at one time, it was high more into the health industry, but is it that, has that flipped? And the idea of having that program, it's an expensive program to have, but there are other municipalities in the state of Maine that do have that program, and they're able to get the data just like that. And when it comes time to meeting, the gentleman I was speaking with was from Connecticut, and he was the head person for a company. And, you know, you have to have that data and that information. Luckily for me, I've been doing this 26 years, and I was able to pull everything together that he needed. Unfortunately, I had the owner onboard, but it didn't work out for us in the area. So when you're dealing with site selectors and stuff, I got to be on the top of things and be able to go to where these site selectors are, you know, and become familiar and say, look, this is what we have here, and here's the data that backs up on what we need. So yes, you're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
I just have one quick question, Tracy. Saco Main Street and their TIF.
Yes.
My recollection in 2021 was that increase was through 2025. So when I'm looking at the request based on that information, that was for the succession plan of the previous director, bringing in a new director, and having a third employee. We have not had a third employee since Mindy, but she did not accept the position. So just for council purposes, like I said, for me looking at this based on that information, looking at their request, this would be a new request because technically they would have gone back to the original funding from 2021. Is that correct? Do you have all that documentation?
You probably do. I mean, you know, I just, I've been working with them.
Yes.
Trying to get to that goal where, how are you going to sustain yourself? So basically, you know, this is going to be a decision to council for anybody kind of coming forth and asking for funding. They do have a grant writer onboard that's working with them. They are making some significant progress as well. But I'm certainly, you know, they'll have to speak for themselves on their request.
Okay, but yeah, again, as far as the TIF, I didn't know if you had that documentation before that.
Yeah, I have nothing in documentations that states that it was going to end that time. When I came onboard, my initial goal was to work with them to get them where they didn't need the, you know, that type of funding coming all from the city, that they were able to get it through other sources.
Okay. So again, just for historical purposes and transparency, on that $100,000, Director Salas, former Director Salas had listed that through 2025. And Tori, you can correct me, you were here during that time as well when we worked on it with former Director Biggs. So their $100,000 request is a legitimate request. Just looking at it, that technically this year would have been the year that they would have dropped back.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Tracy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that now takes us to the Finance Department, and that is page 58 of the Budget Book.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I am pleased to get to present to you my first financial budget with the Finance Department. So I'm winding up the night for you. So what you see up there now is organizational chart. We are attempting to add some depth to the Finance Department so that we do not get caught with that one person leaving and the Finance Department collapsing. So hopefully, we can get enough depth in there so that we can reinforce the internal controls, that we can address all the financial issues and have good cross-training and a very strong Finance Department. Right now, it doesn't mean that we need to increase the headcount. There was a position that was added during 2025. So we are just now looking to fill in the vacancies for the department and then be able to start the training from there. Which leads us to our goals, which is to focus, this year will be a big focus on developing management, training, and motivation of the current and incoming accounting team. As you know, it's, can be difficult to find accounting personnel that has municipal training. So that's going to require a little extra training for the people that we, the qualified people that we bring onboard, which includes me as well. So we'll all be training together. It also will help improve our monthly and quarterly processes to ensure that you, in particular, are receiving timely financial information. I know that's been a problem in the past, and that's something I'm looking to correct very quickly. I think it's important for the decision-makers of the city to have accurate, timely financial information on a regular basis. So I do understand the importance of that. And again, we're going to focus on cross-training. We don't want a gap in the Finance Department ever. That's always dangerous to any organization, either city, private, it doesn't matter. So this way, we can have continuity and improve in the financial reporting and accuracy so that we, when I come to you, I can say with authority, this is correct. Another thing that we are going to be looking at is evaluating a lot of our current policies and looking to improve, especially the internal control policies to prevent fraud, and look at the best practices that are recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. We want to make sure that we are presenting financials, you know, with good integrity, that are accurate, timely, and that fall in line with both GAAP and GASV principles. And then next is our overview of our financial budget. We're a small department, so we don't have a lot of expenses. Most of our expenses are personnel-related, like everybody else tonight has talked about. One of the reasons our bigger increase in our salaries is we did not ask for a budget amendment when we added that additional person in fiscal year '25. So this includes that additional person that was added in '25, and then along with the regular COLA increases. Anything else on here? We came in pretty well, I think. We had a little bit of an increase in, mostly, the increase was due to, like I said, the personnel and software. The software costs increased pretty dramatically, I think, this year, almost $20,000. And then, of course, the cost of audit, the cost of all the contracting services went up a little bit. But we didn't add anything new, as far as I can tell, to the '26 budget. So that's pretty short and sweet. Do you all have any questions about the Finance Budget?
Great job for your first one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Let me just add that one of the goals that we set out a few months ago was to, as Jennifer has said, to have the depth in the Accounting Department so that we don't have a situation where we have any gaps in our ability to do our financial statements, keep up with our financial responsibilities. It was a little dicey there for a while, but I'm very happy that Jennifer's got things under control and Judy working with her. And hopefully, we'll be bringing on some other people to give us some depth in the organization. So, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Did anyone have any questions or comments? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Good job.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah. And you've got a great mentor sitting right next to you, so pick her brain as long as you can.
I do. I'll keep her around for a little while.
I'm going to just, a high-level comment relative to processing payments and a strategy to shift as much more as we can to automated payment systems. And I believe Director Tui mentioned something about collecting permit fees and that kind of stuff. So I'm just, and I'm an old-schooler, okay? I like to write checks, and I'm getting over it. The ACH component and the transfer, the whatever tools we can use, online payment mechanisms, Venmo, you know, I don't even know if that's appropriate. But I think that in the long run, as you probably know, it just increases the efficiency and cost per transaction when you're trying to eliminate, you know, human-to-human interaction for processing of a transaction. So I just wanted to maybe pick your brain a little bit about what you think can be done, more so in the long term than in the immediate future, but how we can kind of move in that direction.
So luckily, my predecessors did make some positive changes in that direction. And so I'm riding off their coattails a little bit there. One of the changes I know that was implemented maybe two years ago was the purchase cards. And the great thing about the purchase cards being used to pay especially bills or any other invoices that we can pay, not all vendors are willing to accept them because there's a 3% fee for that. But anybody that's willing to accept them, we have a rebate program with JP Morgan. And just two weeks ago, I received this year's rebate for $45,000. So that brings money back into the city, the more that we can use these purchase cards. So that's one great program. I will say that I've worked closely with AP Specialist, and we pay everything through ACH that can possibly be paid through ACH. It saves postage mainly. It's still about the same amount of work, but it does save some processes as far as mailing goes. And we don't have to depend on the mailman to deliver a check that may or may not get there in time. So we have very timely payments. That way, we don't have late payments and late fees that go along with that. So that is good. As far as online payments coming to us, we do offer, and I asked our tax collector just this morning, in fact, she said it was actually implemented also two years ago. You can pay all of your property taxes, vehicle registration, dog registration, boat registration, all that is available to be paid online. The things that go to the state, the vehicle registration, the boat registration, those get paid back to us through rapid renewal from the state. I want to say weekly, but it seems like comes a little more often than that from what I've seen. The tax payments go directly into our system as our customers. So that's a nice feature that we have. Right now, we're running about 25% of our tax payments are being paid online. So I'm not sure how to increase that since we do offer it as a service, but I'm open to any suggestions to make that easier. I still think we have a little resistance from some people not trusting online payments. I think that happens. And so if we can get them to trust it more, maybe we can increase that 25%.
Yeah, I'm pleased to hear that. And it sounds like you're heading quickly in the direction I just suggested. And you were talking to a guy who thought Venmo was a Sesame Street character when I first heard it. So, but I think that's fabulous. The only, off the top of my head, suggestion that I might offer you is to, you know, we've got a wonderful communications department.
Mm-hmm.
It gets better and better all the time. Whether or not just, you know, public service announcements through our communications, and maybe timed.
Around taxis.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, you know, maybe those kinds of efforts, and just keeping an open mind to, I think as the population gets more comfortable with electronic transfers, as most of us are, that could be a pretty good thing for us in terms of timing of collection and saving of postage. And, you know, I would imagine over time, maybe even creating some inner efficiencies, just transaction handling. So, good?
No, I agree.
So I appreciate, yeah.
Yeah, it's a heavy focus, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Thank you so much, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay, so that completes the presentations for this evening. Next up, item 10, we do have the administrative update. City Administrator Mahenko?
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item deals with the budget timeline. For the next, for April 14th, we will have a continuation of departments presenting. The 21st, we will not have anything. It's Patriots' Day. The 28th, we'll have additional departments coming in. The council workshop and public hearing will take place on May 5. And the council approval for the, will hopefully come forward on May 12. Also, I just want to advise the council and the public that the, we have filled the Public Works Deputy Director. Jason LaVoye has accepted the Deputy Director position at Public Works. Jay started for Saco Public Works in 2004, where he worked until for Saco Public Works in 2004, where he worked until 2018 on, as a level of light equipment operator. In 2018, Jay went to work for Old Orchard Beach School Department as a facility manager. He worked for a few years, and then returned to Saco in 2023. In his role, he's been instrumental in overseeing crew operations, communicating, assisting departments throughout the city, organizing community events, and communicating with residents. I want to congratulate Jay on a well-deserved promotion to Deputy Director. We have a Brook-in-Stream Habitat Restoration Project, RFP. Public Works is advertising the Bear Brook-in-Stream Habitat Restoration Project, closing on Wednesday, April 16th. You can visit the city's website on the bids and RFPs for additional details. RFP 20, I mean, RFP-20, ton, 20-ton heavy-duty deck over trailer. Public Works is soliciting bids for a 20-ton heavy-duty deck over trailer. The deadline for the bid submission is April 23rd at 1:00 p.m. Again, please visit the city's website for additional details. Also, I want to just make note that the Fire Department will have its open house. The open house will take place on May 10th, when visitors will have the opportunity to tour Saco Fire Department, Central Station, enjoy some free firehouse-style food, and see the new and familiar faces. So that's what we have. And the other thing, as I said, is again, upcoming budget reviews with departments. One thing I would like to mention is, we have confirmed that next week, we'll have the full review of contract zones. So that will be on for next week. We have all parties that have, able to get their calendars there. So we'll have that at that time. That will come before the budget presentations, but I think it's timely that we wanted to get it out. That's all I have, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for the City Administrator? Okay, not seeing any. Moving on to item 11, that's Council Discussion and Comment. Any councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Berman? Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is really a request from information that's related to the budget process, but I'm not sure it fits in anywhere else. As I was looking through the Budget Book and noticing the section on Trust Funds, I appreciate the detail about expenditures from the Trust Funds that are in the book. But it might be helpful for me to also understand the balances that exist in the Trust Funds, and that information isn't there. And that includes, I think, and I know it's on the other committee's agenda too, but the Lucia Kimball-Dearing Health Trust, I've been getting some questions about that from constituents also, I think, partly because of the attention being brought to it. But some additional information about the balances there would be helpful.
Just to let you know that I have been in the works of trying to get a meeting with the Chair, and I think I'm almost there. I think I have.
Yeah.
And I will keep you advised as how that meeting.
I appreciate that. And I just note that in, that one in particular in our Budget Book, it references the statute setting up that and says that its financial statements and operations should be available.
Set up in 1917, yeah.
Yeah, at all times. Yep, thank you.
My turn?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you. I was going to bring this up during the Facilities Budget Presentation, but I didn't want to be, or have it be misconstrued as being negative, when there was so much positivity there. But, and, you know, several of your councilors have heard me over the years state, I don't want to say opposition, but my concern for process. And particularly, there's a process of creating new departments, right? And I've spoken to you all several times about this, and I'm pointing fingers because I can go through three separate city administrators where, you know, we didn't necessarily follow the spelled-out process that's in Charter, Section 5, and Chapter 4 of Code. But we are significantly out of alignment with those provisions. And really, all I'm asking is that, prior to the start of the new year, we fix this because it's continually been happening. And when you read these documents, we have departments that don't exist. I'm just looking to clarify. I think it's imperative for, again, a big issue for me is transparency and just understanding the organization. I think residents look at it and say, well, we've seen it, I can throw one out there, who's the Budget Committee? There is no Budget Committee anymore. Years ago, it was merged into Council. I probably could give you the date on that. But it's just, you read it, it's, as much as we've tried to correct that document or those documents, and I think that, you know, these are conversations we have certainly had at our grievance hearings. This is one that, you know, sticks out to me, and particularly, you know, this evening, we have Facilities Department, which, again, I wholeheartedly support the creation of. We haven't followed the provisions in Charter and Code to create those departments. It's just, it's not done through the budget process. It's not done, you know, by the stroke of a pen by City Administrator. It's a process we have to follow. And I just state that because I've had these arguments in the past, where, you know, prior administrator would say, oh, well, you did it during the budget process. And it's like, no, if you read these sections of the code, it's very clear that the creations are by order, not somewhere hidden in the budget. And so, I'm just throwing it out now because I think there's other areas this may come up in the budget going forward, and just asking that we, again, amend those sections before the start of the new year. Thank you.
City Administrator?
Sure, I totally agree with Counselor Johnston on that. He's absolutely correct. Just last week, I was discussing this with our Human Resource Director, and we are in the process of doing those updates. We need to do those. They're way out of alignment and should be taken care of. Of course, there's a process for that, and we'll go through that process. Couple of areas that I did want to move on until we had some definitive direction on are quite obvious, the facilities. So, yes, we will be working on that, and that's something at the top of the list to take care of on the code. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
I just wanted to share a driving experience this morning. I tried to get from my house to downtown Bitterford, and I thought I was driving through Times Square in New York City. The traffic was backed up significantly on all arteries trying to connect to Elm, and all of them. And I'm not faulting anybody because we have work to do. I got, I just turned around and went home, and then my daughter, who works in downtown Bitterford, left about an hour later, and she basically said it really wasn't that bad. She could get to work. So it may have been that early morning rush. Here's my point. It's going to happen. Okay, we know it's going to happen. We've been warned it's going to happen. We got things going on in Bitterford on Elm Street. We had a few things going on in Saco today. My only wish is that the residents of Saco take a deep breath and recognize that traffic will not be easy. And you're a native, so try to remember alternate routes to your destination. I just am afraid that people who will lose patience will actually engage in road rage. That would be very, very disappointing. So take a deep breath and figure it out, and do the best you can, and try to stay calm. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just piggyback on that. It wasn't even a single day, and, you know, I witnessed some reprehensible behavior. Not only just, hey, whatever, I get it. I am where I am. People probably use my driveway to turn around. Not much I can do about that. But like, pulling in very fast, peeling back out, going the wrong way down Store Street seems to be, I don't know, that street has been there for hundreds of years, but now all of a sudden, people don't know how to enter it. And I, this is prior to this morning. I mean, the last week and one day, I counted five cars going down the wrong way. Don't know what's happened. But I share your concern about the road rage, because I think, believe it or not, a large percentage of the population still doesn't understand that this construction is going to happen or is happening. And I think we need to do more to get the message out, because, as you said, I saw it this morning, it was like, what's happening? And I've been sitting here for weeks going, okay, it's happening. And then, you know, judging by how people are driving, it's like, obviously, they weren't prepared, you know. And likewise, we kind of all have to share the burden, because, as you stated out, Counselor Hatch, people are going to find alternative routes, which means there's going to be people driving through people's neighborhoods that didn't used to drive through those neighborhoods. Certainly, I can understand people being frustrated with that, but traffic's got to go somewhere. So we kind of just got to deal with it for the six months or so. And, you know, just try to be decent human beings, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to piggyback on the Grievance Subcommittee meeting that I'll be participating in with Councilors Johnston and Hatch on Wednesday, a reminder to the public that they are public meetings and open to the public. And in that vein, I look forward to the fact that we're going to be focusing most of the meeting on issues related to the Kimball Trust. I thank the City Administrator for attempting diligently to contact the head of the trust. Honestly, I'm disappointed in the fact that, not in you, that it should not be difficult for the senior staff in the city to contact a staff, contact a trust that exists by city statute. So I would encourage any members of the trust to come to the meeting, because right now, working off historical knowledge and our own sort of ideas of what we have in terms of, visibly, the calls to action, we're kind of working in a vacuum. So we can certainly offer our ideas in our final report to the Council when it comes to this issue. But it would help if members of the trust would be willing to come forward, short of us using our power as outlined in the budget process and by Charter, to, lack of better terms, summon them here. So I would like to see members of the trust show up, so we can actually have a discussion about where things are, where they're going, and why grievances exist, for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Next item, item 12, is a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call, vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 9:25, passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.